I'd like to call the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners. Meeting to order. Today is Thursday, July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's nine o'clock AM. Board of County Commissioners convening with other boards. Members of the county commissioners also serve on the. As a liquor board, central line vector control district board, Mason Valley mosquito abatement district board, Walker River route control district board, Willow Creek general improvement. District board, the Silver Springs general improvement district board, and during this meeting may convene us. Any of those boards as indicated on this or any separately posted agenda. This meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. Roll call. We have. Commissioner Jacobson, Commissioner Keller, Commissioner Hawkeye in chambers. We have Commissioner Hendricks online. And Commissioner Casonelli has not yet joined us. Today's invocation will be from Gary Leest. Of the Calvary Chapel Dayton Valley and the Pledge of Allegiance will be by Commissioner Jacobson. So please stand and remain standing. Mr. Chair, I don't see Pastor Leest on there yet. Well, let's go to the pledge allegiance. Let me know if he comes on. If we can do the invocation at any time. This brings us to public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. Is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time. Though may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record. And will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion on each agenda item, but before the board takes any action. And for those of you that are here for the library board. I've heard comments that. That you should talk first. Actually, we'll wait, wait for that until the agenda items so we can hear them all at once. So. This is for stuff not on the agenda. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm Eric Overmeyer. I'm a. Resident of Lyon County. And I did want to take this opportunity to state for the record. My request with all due respect. That Commissioner Keller recuse himself from any participation in the discussion or voting on agenda item seventeen A. I think it's important that one of the residents goes on the record to make this request at this time. The reason for this request is that Vita Keller, Commissioner Keller's wife, is one of the applicants for the position. This presents a clear conflict of interest requiring a recusal under NRS chapter two eighty-one A. And as outlined in the Nevada, in the State of Nevada Ethics Manual. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm well aware of my responsibilities and duties.
Morning. My name is Jim Denning. My wife and I reside in one real district here in Yarrington. I'd like to address two, two phases of an address at twenty Palomino. And the owners. First is the criminal actions that should have been taken. I've got ninety-five pages service, calls for service from ten eighteen to nine twenty-two. Got forty-one calls from ten twenty-two to seven twenty-five. Twenty of those calls were not able to use this property address that are associated closely with people that are involved. And that address. None of those is still open, and that's one that. They seized one pound of meth, a stolen gun, a scale, money, paraphernalia. Along with the rest of these, there's been few convictions, slaps on hands. And my next problem is code violation. Charges being dropped, nothing being done. There was a semi cleanup that occurred. And after that, the place was burnt, deemed inhabitable. They were still living on the premises. That was a rough winter. They threw, threw out. They stayed there and couldn't get them out. They had no power, no gas. There was no permits issued to do any repairs. Had multiple people back and forth, transients, migrants, whatever. Staying in a motor home that was there and old trailers that was there. The motor home still is there. One of the trailers is there. The additional junk is there. There was impromptu meeting of all the entities that were involved in this property disputes. And a person with power attorney for this property agreed to a complete cleanup. And either resale or doing something with it in six months. Six months is up. It's been very little done. The motor home's still there.
Excuse me, sir. Your time is up.
Okay.
Did you sign in?
Yes, I did.
Eric, did you sign in? Thank you. Any more public comment? Seen none and seen none online? Move on to number five for possible action review and adoption of agenda. We have a motion.
I move to adopt the agenda as written.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Hawkeye, seconded by Commissioner Jacobson. Going to public comment. Is there any public comment? Any online? Bring it back for the vote. Those in favor say aye. Motion passes four zero. Six, presentation of awards and or recognition of accomplishments.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Colleen Untrubink, Human Resources Director for the Record. And I'm happy to be here this morning to present service awards to Lyon County employees who have hit service milestones ranging from.
Let me read that when I get to that. That's under seven A.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this was this one. Okay.
You can stay there. You're next on, but I have to read it in. Before I move on, was there any other presentations, awards, or recognition of accomplishments? Okay, seeing none. Seven, time certain, seven eight, time certain for nine o'clock AM for presentation only. Recognize employees who hit service milestones with Lyon County.
Okay, take two. Do I need to? Okay. So I'm happy to be here again, Colleen Untrubink, HR Director for the Record, to present these service awards to Lyon County employees who have hit their service milestones. Ranging from five years on up to thirty years of service. I'm going to go through this list. I believe we have several folks here who are here today to receive their awards if you'd like to come on up here. And for those of you who have ten or more years of service, please stop by the Human Resources Office to collect your special gift. All right, Martha, if you want to maybe help too, that would be great. Okay, first up, we have Nicholas Walker. Okay, I'm going to just hand these to you. Samantha Ugalday. Brian True. Gregory Smith. The Essentium. Okay, Jennifer Stockwell Chartcheese here. Annabelle Rodriguez. Jacob Patterson. Perry Norman. Diana Moore. Jeremiah Marshall. Mark Lenahan. Brandy Lathrup. Ryan Pearl. Okay, Doug Homestead. And last for our five years of service, Jeremy Dilly. Okay, next up, we have ten years of service, Melissa Strobel. Michael Rumian. Joseph Mountjoy. Billy Milligan. And Rebecca Bonner. Peter, excuse me. Okay, next up, we have fifteen years of service, Pierre Witten. Denny Revilio. Sean Lee. Angelica Martina. Okay, moving into our twenty years of service, Ingrid Water. Sean Sinclair. Jeffrey Miller. Gray Fresser. G and K. Denise Johnson. Dustin Holman. Okay. All right, those are our twenty years. Lastly, we have two with thirty years of service, Bud Stinson. And last up, we have Eric Owings. Okay.
Thirty years.
Thank you. We'd like to get some pictures really quick if we can.
Taylor asked.
Thirty years, good run by him.
We're going to move on to seven B for time certain. Actual check out. I just want to thank all of the, all the employees, but those milestones, thirty-ish. And that gentleman said he started off as a seasonal, so this was actually his thirty-sixth year.
Yeah, thank you.
So. Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. Seven B, time certain at nine o'clock AM for possible action. Presentation approval of a resolution transferring the county's. Two million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents unused private activity bond volume cap. Cap to Nevada Rural Housing Authority for its single family programs. Welcome.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Brewer, Nevada Rural Housing. Appreciate this opportunity to be with you this morning. Just want to mention briefly that. Nevada Rural Housing's been around for a little over fifty years, and we've done a lot of work over that time. We helped over eleven thousand home buyers since two thousand and six when we initiated our single family program. With two and a half billion dollars in mortgages, so really an incredible service to rural Nevada. We simply could not do that without the partnership of communities like Lyon County. Who help us with transfers of your bond cap. We're here this year to ask again for the transfer of your bond cap. Of course, if the county has a better use for it, we totally support that, but we appreciate your help. In the last year, NRH has assisted fifty-two home buyers. In Lyon County with eighteen million dollars in mortgages just in the last year in this county. So I think it's been a pretty good trade-off for the county so far. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Board have any questions? Anybody online? Anybody in the room? Bring it back to the board for motions. Chair Keller. When making motion will approve the resolution transferring the county's two million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents unused private activity bond cap bar. Private bond volume cap to Nevada Rural Housing Authority for its single family programs. Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, seconded by Commissioner Hawkeye. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I want to point out that Commissioner Casonelli has joined us. And I don't see Commissioner Hendricks.
I'm here.
Okay.
Good. What did I?
Okay, motion passes five zero. And it's nine seventeen. Brings us to number eight, Commissioners' County Managers Reports. I'll go online first. Commissioner Hendricks.
Yes, I attended the open house for the Comfort House here in Silver Springs. It's a nonprofit that houses. Kids that have been removed from their home temporarily. This allows them to stay in their own community, still participate in school and sports, and be with their friends. I attended the Silver Springs Advisory Board, the Planning Commission, the Library Board, Carson Water Sub Conservancy District Board. The NACO Annual Conference, and I'll give a report on that next time in person. That's it.
Commissioner Casonelli.
Thank you, Chair. And my apologies for my tardiness this morning. I was attending the Carson City. Board of Supervisors meeting where my wife was awarded the employee of the quarter. And I just wanted to say a quick thank you to our staff that received longevity awards and their service is much appreciated. I attended the planning commission meeting via Zoom, attended the Campo Board meeting. The Silver City Citizen Advisory Board meeting. The Quad County Community Health Improvement Plan meeting. Where we are discussing transportation needs and I'm working, working towards a collaboration with. Carson Supervisor Shutey on, we're exploring the potential of. Transportation for Lyon County residents to connect with the jump-around Carson bus, so that's an ongoing. Ongoing collaboration. I also held along with the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development luncheon. That was very well attended. I. I appreciate our county manager, Andrew Haskin, as well as the Carson City Manager Glenn Martel. And Story County Manager Austin Osborne for speaking. It was a good opportunity for our citizens to come and learn a little bit about our, what we like to call a regional economy. So anyway, that's all I have today. Thank you.
Commissioner Jacobson. Let's take it, Chair. Matt Westbaden, Chamber of Commerce Chair, very dynamic gentleman, was. Very entertaining. He's a very remarkable gentleman. Attended meeting sessions around CTE, Career Technical Education. Very exciting time for kids going into these trades and technical fields. So great opportunity, a lot of opportunities around our county and state for. For Lyon County residents that may or may not be outraged to vote. Tour the Silver City Cemetery. I had that on my. List to do and finally got around to swinging by there. It'd been, I think, twenty-eight years since I'd visited that when I was. And so really unique historical site and final resting spot. With a view for everybody residing there. Visited Rapid Infiltration Basin in Dayton. I'll be requesting another update on that. But. Looked great as far as what's in there. I know in talking with County Manager Haskin that. They're shipping a lot of water right now, obviously, to the golf course and possibly those fields, but. But it'd be a great chance to meet our, you know, as well. Tended to Friendly City Council meeting. And even schools, then a few doors in Oregon and Idaho, so that's all I have. Thank you, Commissioner Hawkeye.
Well, I'm happy to say that the first annual Smith Valley fireworks display was fantastic, over a half hour of fireworks. Normally, they launch the fireworks on the Fourth of July at the north end of the valley. But we have now moved it to the Dressler Park area, so I was able to sit out in my front yard and watch the fireworks to the north of me. Attended the Smith Valley Citizens Advisory Board and the Smith Valley Park Board. Also attended these on Zoom, the Planning Commission. We also had a fantastic turnout for the Smith Valley Fire Department fundraiser and barbecue. I've never seen so many people there in the past years. It was. Hardly anywhere to park for half a mile or so down all the different roads. I also tended the local emergency planning committee the other day and discussed updating positions and. On that board. That's about all I had chance to do this last couple of weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkeye. I attended the Comfort House along with Commissioner Hendricks. She reported on that. I attended the Independence Day celebrations on the Fourth of July in firmly. That was pretty good. Tended the planning commission. And I just got back from the annual NACO conference in Philadelphia, and I'll do my report when Commissioner Hendricks is back. Do it together. I wrote comment that we did get new leadership in National NACO. J D Clark from Texas took his new position as president. The Vice President, we elected Alicia Bell from Wayne County, Michigan. On rack, we have Terry Wilber, Wilber from Oswego County, New York, and. The Western Region, we have William Novotny from Johnson County, Wyoming. And on real, our last meeting where we elected Dwayne McFarley from Fremont County, Colorado. That means on that board, we have Texas, Michigan, New York, Wyoming, and Colorado, so we get quite a different range of people. And that's all I have. So go on to the county manager, County Manager Haskin.
Good morning, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. I've been super busy lately. Not a whole lot for the group today, but just had a couple of things I wanted to point out. I met with Chief Bun with Northline Fire, just to discuss how we can kind of strengthen that relationship. And we had a really good meeting and look forward to working with them more in the future. We would continue to hold meetings on the Northline Power General Improvement District and. We're continuing to work through that, and I hope to bring something forward on that very soon. I want to thank Commissioner Casonelli for inviting me to speak at the Dayton Chamber. Give the economic update with. With the Story County Manager and the Carson City Manager, the new Carson City Manager. So it was a good event. And then just something that's coming up. We have a meeting next week to kick off the C Mar for the Dayton Government Complex, so. Really looking forward to getting going on that, so. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Yeah, excellent.
Yeah, actually, just remind me of a couple of things to depth, naming to the Dayton.
I have not gotten that far yet. I will. Get that on there.
I'm curious about that. I mean, the firmly justice complex is coming around. It seemed like it took forever, and now it's gaining serious momentum. And looks like the. Emergency Response Building Boys and Girls Club, City of Friendly. Building is going to have their ribbon cutting here in August, but the soft opening is, is any day, so. Just a couple of updates on those buildings as well.
When I get that final data on the opening, I will bring that to the group. I think I was in a meeting with the mayor yesterday, and he mentioned. Yeah, it's, it's right around there at the end of the month, so.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Bring us to number nine, elected officials reports, and the elected officials for report. I was supposed to ask, how did the Lyon County Sheriff's do against the milk line fire in the big kitchen contest over the Fourth? I'm sure, I'm sure the police department won. There's no way we're getting anything different than that. You have guns. You have guns, you could have shot the pig.
Good morning, Lyon County Sheriff's. No, we did not catch a pig. They got the pig. We were bummed out. The, the previous two pigs tasted delicious when we were looking for a third pig. Fourth of July was nice and quiet and. It went well, so. But thanks for throw a salt in my way.
Well, I personally want to thank you for letting them in. They needed a double M for good job. So I'm going to move off elected officials reports, go on to appointed officials reports. Have any. Pointed officials reports? Okay, move on to advisory board reports. Do we have any advisory board reports?
Yes, I'm Eric Overmeyer. I'm the Chair of the Silver City Advisory Board. The paving project in Silver City is complete, and it's just amazing. It's an amazing improvement. It's, it's like floating. And so special, special thanks to the roads department and the facilities department. And also ANK Earth Movers, who I believe was the contractor on that. And special thanks to Judge Smith, who not only, not only ram rotted that project, but he also, and I think I've spoken about this before, but. But he also realized that in, in the preparation for the repaving, they would be producing a large volume of fill, which. They then transported to the, to our cemetery. We, we had, we had an expansion area for our cemetery, but it was too steep and couldn't really be used. So now that fill actually, actually leveled that out. So we have, we have a great spot for the cemetery expansion. It's nice and flat, but it's also pretty barren. So the next thing for our community then is just going to be to. Get together as a community and kind of talk about it and decide what kind of a cemetery we want and how to proceed to, to make it happen.
Commissioner Jacobson. So Mr. Evans, thank you, Chair. So. In visiting that, that's the area between the fencing, the, just to. In visiting that, uh, that's the area between the fencing, the just to be just below the actual old parking. And the fencing and the and, uh, um, cow, what was, uh?
There's another lot there with some some concrete, uh, concrete block retaining. Yeah, it's that area.
So without being a historical site, do you have to go through the historical society to make those changes?
We would. No, not as a historical site, but we would, since we're in the historic district, any sort of improvements or architectural stuff. That we'd have to run by the Historic District Commission for their approval. That that would, that would be true for any kind of building or thing we're going to do. As for, as for, we are well removed from the actual history part. So. In terms of having to worry about uncovering an old eighteen sixties grave or something, that's not an issue.
Right. I just wasn't sure that worked with it because I know at the cemetery, there's a historical sign donation.
But the the cemetery or the historical part is is at the far southeastern end. Then that middle section with that's, that's the section, um, I think it was established in the nineteen seventies and that's would be quote the modern. That that's where the the current residents of Silver City.
Right.
And then the next place in that area is full, which is why it's a big deal. So the next area then that they've leveled and and you know, thanks to judge, so.
Yeah, I noticed, uh, with the headstones, there's a big difference in, uh, s- some of the. More more residents compared to some of the pasts for sure. So, but yeah, so as in as far as anywhere close. Um, you just, when it comes to us, I don't know if we get that information or if. If we're working with the historical society to do those types of improvements, move fencing or, and I'm not saying you're moving fencing, but. I don't want to cut you off. You will just.
It's a long drive. I'm.
So, but.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. So, um, just for a little bit of information, the cemetery is actually a county cemetery. So, um, you know, we would have to work with them. Like, you know, on that.
Right. I just wasn't sure because it's part of the historical district like the deep part. I don't know if we, uh. The fully understand the loops we're going through on that. I just want to make sure that. That we're meeting and abiding by all the.
We can maybe bring an item forward at even, you know, the point to discuss it further.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I think they're going to use all dirt. So, because they moved. Any other advisory board reports? Any online? See none. That brings us to the consent agenda. Action will take along all items, all matters listed. Under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action. And without an extensive hearing, any member of the board or any citizen. May request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Does anybody on the board want to remove item for discussion? Anybody, uh, commissioners online? Yeah, go to the public. Anybody want something pulled for discussion? And online?
Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda twelve A through twelve L is presented.
Second. We got a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Hawkeye. Those in favor say aye, aye, aye. Motion passes five zero. For those two commissioners online, if I state the, the result wrong, please notify me right away. Motion passes five zero. Brings us to thirteen public hearing on planning items. Thank you for this long one. Thirteen A for possible action to approve the request from Stanton Park Development Incorporated for the abandonment of sixty foot. Wide access easements for a portion of Six Mile Canyon Road and a portion of Fort Churchill Road as to dedicate. Per parcel map two seven one four eight three and parcel map two seven one four eight four, together with abandonment of the ten foot. Public utility. And drainage easement line southern of and adjacent to both roads and reserving the ten foot. Public utility and drainage easement line notably of and adjacent to said portions of both roads. And accept the dedication for the realignment portions of Six Mile Canyon Road and Fort Churchill Road as shown on the Six Mile Canyon Road dedication. Exhibit A one and the Fort Churchill dedication easements, A one and A two located at Six Mile Canyon Road and Fort Churchill Road at. U S Highway fifty in Dayton, A P N zero one six, oh, two, five, ten, twelve, thirteen, sixteen and seventeen. PLZ twenty twenty five zero thirty eight.
Good morning, Commissioners. Leepan Ash, Senior Planner. I apologize for the long description. That was as concise as we could make it. Um, so today this is, um, you'll go to the next slide. We're, um. Looking at the sites located here for a abandonment of the old alignment of the road and dedication of the new. It include abandonments of the access, uh, right of ways as well as public utility and drainage easements. So the site is located at the intersection north of, uh. At the intersection of Highway forty and Six Mile Canyon Road and Fort Churchill Road in Dayton. The, um. Abandements and dedications of the existing road and utility and drainage easements only affect the property shown on this plan and is listed in our description. They are all owned by Stanton Park Development. So for a little background, in two thousand six, two thousand seven, the roadways were realigned to improve their connection with Highway fifty to make them more, um. Ninety degrees, which is safer and, uh, aligned with each other. The realignment then was done with temporary access easements. And the dedication of the new road alignments were to be performed by River Park Properties LLC on behalf of Stanton Park Development in the county. However, the company went into bankruptcy, then receivership, leaving the dedications and filing of the abandonments incomplete. So this application is solely to bring the mapping for the subject parcels into alignment with the completed construction. We know it's twenty years late, but there's been no development on those properties until interest recently, and now we're trying to clean all this up. So here is recorded parcel number two seven one four eight three. You can see on the slightly highlighted areas, the portions of the road. That are in question and this shows the previous alignment. Can I have the next slide, please? And this just moves a little bit further over to the east, showing more of the alignment. So right here are our first two exhibits showing the abandonment on the left hand side and the dedication of the. New, uh, right of ways on the right. Um, and these will be what would be filed if approved, um. The, I do want to point out again, this road alignment is in existence, has been in existence for a very long time. So this, uh. Let's see, I think I have two slides. The thing, can we go to the next one? All right. So here is the abandonment map for the Fort Churchill Road portion. You can see where the road was straight across and now it's been brought further south with a swing to. Be more ninety degrees with Highway fifty. And then this portions, the dedication shown on two maps so that it covers the whole portion. Um. This is the realigned, uh, roadway in existence now as well as correcting some of the easements. And it has been reviewed by the, um. County Surveyor, we've got made improvements before it came forward to you and there may be. There will be a further review. There may be some slight details on a note here or there, but we're pretty much ready to record this if you guys approve the. Abandonment and dedications and I'm available for any questions.
Commissioner Jacobson. Thank you. So I guess when I was looking through this packet, my question was, was that? Little curve in the road designed to make it a safer entry and exit to fifty? And does that change that integrity at all? Um, as far as entry and exit, um, on the, the road.
No, it what the the intent was to make them more aligned with each other and at closer to a ninety degree. So it was intended to improve the integrity and. Moving forward, you know, there is the potential for a light there in the future, something as development comes in. So all of the improvements that have been done previously were intended to make that a safer intersection.
Right. I was just curious about the history of that because I know it's been a bit, it's been a minute.
Yes, it's honestly, this started over twenty years ago at this or almost twenty years ago at this point. So. Yes, uh, this is really just correcting them, the mapping that should have been done years ago.
Right.
No question. Any question from commissioners online?
No.
Then. Then this should clean up all the roads in Lyon County, right?
Everyone else is perfect and every right foot is correct-ish.
Is there any question from the public? Any online? While entertaining motion.
I move to approve the request from Stanton Park Development Incorporated for the abandonment of sixty foot wide access easement for a portion of Six Mile Canyon Road and a portion of Fort Churchill Road is dedicated per parcel map two seven one four eight three and parcel map two seven one four eight four. Together with the abandonment of the ten foot public utility and drainage easement lying sou- southerly of and adjacent to both roads. And reserving the ten foot public utility and drainage easement line more early of and adjacent to. Said portions of both roads and accept the dedication for the realignment portions of Six Mile Canyon Road and Fort Churchill Road as shown on the Six Mile Canyon Road dedicated. Dedication exhibit A dash one and Fort Churchill Road dedication exhibit A dash one and A dash two located at Six Mile Canyon Road. And Fort Churchill Road at U S Highway fifty in Dayton, A P N zero one six dash zero two five dash one zero. Dash one two dash one three dash one six dash one seven, P L Z two zero two five dash zero three eight.
I have a second, but is that a six, right there, second to the last line, Six Mile Canyon Road and. Fort Churchill Road.
There's a typo on that because maybe.
Yeah, I'm sorry for the typo. I should say four.
I'll set it up.
There are a motion by Commissioner Hawkeye, second by Commissioner Jacobson. Those in favor say aye, aye. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
That brings us to number fourteen. Clerk Treasurer. Fourteen A for presentation only clerk review of election equipment and cost.
Good morning. Stacy Lambert, Lyon County Treasurer, for the record. Um, I'm doing a presentation today because I, I. I feel I'm going to have to come forward for some funding and I wanted to give you guys time to to consider what. Um, is a possibility for us and and that lets you know the research I've done. Um, in order to get this together and, um, it's a a new system from Dominion. So. Um, I'm going to start with the glossary, please. Because there's a lot of abbreviations and things in the election process that. Uh, we use and isn't like public knowledge. So, um, I did want to go over some of those. Um, one of the printers that we use. Um, in the election system is called the V V pat and that's what the state is requiring us to replace. Um, it's the infrared printer that you see next to the big screen when you vote. It's that little case to the side that houses the. The record of the printed vote that gets saved to the USB. Um, the image cast X ballot printing device is that big screen that you actually vote on. Um, a B and D is what we use now and what they are also proposing. Is just a ballot marking device. So none of our votes are actually cast electronically. Um, they've always been in a ballot marking device, uh, situation to where, um, we have paper backups for all of our votes, uh, to compare against. Um, one of the new, uh, equipments that they're offering is a I C P. It's a mobile tabulating device where they actually. Um, are proposing tabulating the votes on site. The voter actually would put their ballot in this tabulator. And it's electronically counted on site, um, which you'll see in my presentation. I'm not a fan of. Um, and SOS, if I say SOS, I do mean the Secretary of State, which is Francisco Aguilar. Um, and ADA, I'm sure everyone knows that, but, uh, that's one of the compliances that we have to look at when we look at equipment. So if we, um, I would like to begin explaining, uh, my journey on how we arrived here today. Dominion started Dominion starting demoing and marketing new paper ballot marking devices, um. Which was an upgrade to actually a printed ballot versus the V V pat record to the side in twenty three. Uh, we would use the upgrade, we would use our recent updated pole pads. Our current I C X machines, our current smart cards and would only change out the printing device. Um, and replace it with an HP printer, which actually prints a paper ballot once the voter hits cast. Versus printing to the V V pat for review and printed record. The next slide. This is the equipment that they are proposing. Um, when first reviewed, I did not see the benefit outweigh the cost, just changing out the V V pat to an HP printer. Um, our current system is also a ballot marking device, which this I C X system is. Um, with paper backup. However, the paper backup is on an infrared printer roll for device. Called the V V pat on the right. Oh, no, sorry, next slide. So that on the right is the V V pat. Um, and the ballot marking device, also known as the I C X, which saves ballots to the U U S B. Is on the left. In the system, the ballots cast by the voter gets duplicated, one printed to the V V pat and one sent to an electronic storage on a USB of which both are secured using chain of custody. And seals. No party other than the team leads and the counting board can access. I liked our current system over the upgrade due to its durability, secured access, size, ease of transport, storage requirements and lower costs. The infrared paper roll costs less and has no toner. The current system can be securely and successfully managed with fewer staff and poll workers. Also not a big fan of using printers as mobile printing devices since they are not as sturdy, small and light. As our current V V pat printers, which are built to be transported and secured for easy chain of custody and ballot security. As well as a paperless process. We learned mid-June, no matter whether we upgrade or not, we're going to be required to do a software upgrade as well as replace all smart cards for the twenty twenty six election. And will be supported and reimbursed by the Secretary of State. Of which we had completed this purchase and reimbursement is promised at the cost of nine thousand two hundred and sixty seven dollars. Uh, a new slide, please. This is the new proposed equipment. Um, and next slide shows that it is ADA compatible with all of our equipment. Uh, the new proposed removes the USB electronic backup. And then backup entirely and we use the same I C X for the voter to cast the ballot, but instead of printing to the V V pat for the voter review. It will be sent to an HP printer that would print a full paper ballot for voter review. Next slide, please. This is what the system would look like now. Each voter must then insert into a secrecy sleeve and take to either a drop box or a mobile tabulator referred to as an I C P two. Versus printing to the V V pat. Next slide, please. This gives you the picture of what the two look like. So I'm, I'm, the mobile ballot printer. Has a big encased bottom that needs to be cleaned out throughout the day if it gets full. Um, ballot boxes we can exchange out. In the general of twenty four, which was one of the highest turnouts of voters we have had at thirty three thousand six hundred and seventeen cast ballots. We had fifty one percent of voters using mail in paper ballots and forty nine voters looked at voting electronically. With the current SOS policies and the mass mail out ballot mandate, you could receive a paper ballot if you would like one or not. And or vote electronically if you so choose was one of the reasons I struck, I stayed my course at that time. We had no complaints and minimal rate times and was able to serve community with approximately sixty poll workers to a staffs. To assist staff and volunteers. That being said, the upgrade and cost would have been approximately a hundred and fifty thousand with no refund and grant funds available for the state from the state. State did mention if to go to the new equipment and any possible funds left over, you could get a portion back and maybe look into federal funding someday. If mandatory upgrades are implemented. That being said, on March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, President Trump signed an executive order. Calling called preserving and protecting the integrity of the American elections, which according to the State of Nevada Attorney General's Office would make the V V pat system shown here, we currently. calling, called preserving and protecting the integrity of the American elections, which according to the State of Nevada Attorney General's Office would make the VB PAT system shown here we currently use. Sorry, lost my spot. Make, make this system obsolete due to the barcode and the paper record. I have confirmed with the vendor, removing the barcode and leaving the printed voter record is not an option. The executive order, section one, paragraph eight, next slide, please. And clarified in section four B is where it specifically states voter information cannot be shown within a barcode as shown on the slide. Is why I have been directed that the state will require the equipment for the 2026 election, even though he has chosen to join in a lawsuit against the order. I am confused on the double speak, but in review of the order and the fact sheet that accompanies that order, it appears the president would assistance funding equipment to states that would comply with the order. So I'm unsure of the decision to fight the order if affecting our ability to get federal funding assistance or if our SOS did not request assistance for our county since he chose to oppose the legitimacy of the order. Either way, appears we have to fund from our county funds, for now I will continue to pursue assistance.
I have a question for you on that because I get to double speak between state and federal. And on this, it says should, it doesn't say shall, and it says, so from the federal level, they're not mandating that you change that, that you remove the barcode. And what I get is the state that's saying, under their interpretation, that you have to remove it.
That is correct.
Thank you.
The order addresses many processes that we currently use that need to be corrected and updated, however, at the current time, I have not received full direction on how, when or if our SOS will implement them outside of the equipment requirements. I have reached out to the Secretary of State and have been active in conversations to see if the state will subsidize or assist the cost due to this being mandated by the executive order. But was told only if they had funds left or not known at this time was the last response. The following was my last interaction with the state. The counties who have already purchased and if paid by June thirtieth, will receive subsidies from the state, which was great news for those who have already purchased and paid. Since this notice came to me on July seventh of twenty twenty-five. I followed up with other clerks to find out how they heard of this option and was told they received individual calls stating if they had paid by June thirtieth, they are eligible for assistance. Still choking on that response a bit. That being said, the only system certified in Nevada for tabulation to date is Dominion and ESNS, of which we currently use Dominion. In my research, I did find other equipment made by No Ink, our current voter election management system that are compatible with our Dominion tabulators. But the cost to replace what we currently have would be near five hundred and fifty thousand dollars and makes no sense when we can get in compliance for under a hundred and fifty thousand. That being said, my research has brought me to the conclusion, we need to comply with the equipment updates. My current estimate is approximately a hundred and seven thousand if we upgrade our existing equipment reverse, reverse equipment versus replacing it in full. On the slide. That's from the fact sheet. Where it says that, I mean, that, that, that one kinda says if it is mandated and the state complied, that they would help us. So I just wanted to share that, next slide. I have chosen to include the IC, or not to include the ICP two tabulators in my request for funds. And go with the secured ballot box transfer as shown on the left. I do not see how our voters could come out of a ten check-in station, twenty-five marking devices down to one or two tabulators and not cause another huge issue with security of ballots and wait times, especially if we had one to go down for any reason or have IT issues onsite. Tabulators, if we were to purchase the tabulators, the ballot gets fed through and drops into a large container, as shown on the, on the slide. Would need to be cleaned out or we purchase mailbags to switch out on the site. The tabulator only accepts one ballot at a time and we have three commercial tabulators in our office that we can run ballots in batches of a hundred at any one time. And in theory, I can spend twelve thousand on ballot boxes versus fifty thousand on tabulators, giving only one or two per site and looks to me to be a security nightmare. Mail ballot, mail paper ballots and printed paper ballots from the ICX must remain separate and be tabulated separately. So that being said, I believe the best way to securely manage and transport ballots is to purchase ballot boxes versus the mobile tabulators and switch out throughout the day. This way, no seals are broken by anyone other than the certified counting board and ballots are not handled by anyone other than the voter and the counting board. Next slide. This is what the, the tabulator would actually, each voter would have to feed their ballot in, so I just kinda wanted to show you that. I'm doing this presentation only at this meeting to get input, answer questions and address concerns of the board before coming for funding from contingency as well as give anyone who wishes to have input, time to review and research. Any ideas and input to better the overall election process for our voters is welcome. I do not have all quotes finalized yet to accommodate the upgrades, but at this time, my best estimate would be under a hundred and seven thousand. The last slide, please. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Checking if I'm wrong here, but it sounds like fifty-one percent of our ballots are coming in on paper ballots?
Yes.
And thirty-nine percent were working with these machines?
Yes.
That seems like people are more apt to use a paper ballot and we've got a tens of thousands of dollars in machinery here that people probably don't use paper ballots, wow.
That's why I'm going it to you today, because those, those are options, there's one county in the state that is all paper ballots and that would be a decision of the board and I'm, I'm happy to listen to that input. I've seen passionate, passion both ways. And the ballot marking devices basically, I, I, like you said, they, they seem to be just, just your first impression there. But in reviewing it a little bit, the hand-marked paper ballots have a lot less accuracy where when they come in, it takes a lot more adjudication, there's a lot more rejections and stuff because it's not marked, there may be a funny mark on it or something. So a lot of them have to be adjudicated, we have to check back on them. And if the people don't respond, that ballot can't be counted. So that's one of the ways they're selling these electronic paper ballot marking devices.
Thank you. Ms. Lambert, thank you for the presentation, so how old are our old machines?
I think they were purchased in eighteen? Two thousand and eighteen, I believe. I can get that date for you for sure.
Was there any indication from the reimbursing agencies, the federal agency, is that correct?
Then, yes, the, the federal's funded them, but to date, I know I've reached out to Amadee's office, I know Chairman Keller had talked to some representatives as well for funding. And it's always, you know, I, like I said, it's, it's double speak to me because I can't get a straight answer from anyone. I go to someone at the federal level and it says, because our state isn't complying, I go to the state and they're like, we don't think the, the order is valid, or you know, they're, they're in a lawsuit fighting it, so it's kind of a, that portion of it is above my pay grade, the only direction I have received directly in writing is that the Secretary of State finds the VB PAT obsolete and cannot be used in the 2026 election because it contains a barcode, even though it does contain a printed ballot basically on that roll and that's what we actually audit, we'd never use the barcode in our county, we've always audited from those paper ballot votes. But I keep getting told as long as that barcode's on there, you cannot use that VB PAT and secondly, Dominion will not remove the barcode.
So as far as reimbursement, it sounds like maybe limited funds or is that early bird gets the worm and they're still the reimbursement money, pot of money runs out?
You know, and that's the part, like I said, I'm still choking on that a bit, because I, I mean, we had meeting, we have meetings weekly and we discuss weekly what they would do and you know, so some counties were able to go out and get the funds ahead of time and do it. I looked at it and it's like, for, for what we're getting, for the money we'd have to spend, made no sense to me. So I do feel, I mean, by not pushing, I guess, and maybe that falls on me a little bit, but it just honestly didn't make sense at the time to spend that money on something that if the, they tell me that if the, the if it's mandated, that the feds will assist us, so I was, it was a catch twenty-two for me. And that's why getting a note on July seventh, that some of the counties that have already done it are gonna get reimbursed if you pay by the thirtieth, I, I I'm at a loss for that portion of it and I, I'm not happy about it.
Thirtieth of July.
June. I heard on July seventh, they said if you paid for it by July thirtieth, or June thirtieth, sorry. That's why I was not happy. And now they're coming back on the seventh saying, yeah, now it's mandated, you have to upgrade them.
So those other counties chose to do that before the reimbursement possibility was out there?
Yes.
Gotcha. And probably counties that could afford it. That had the money and discretionary spending. So. Maybe somebody can enlighten me, because I don't know how this works, because I don't work for the state. Mr. Aguilar can interpret something wrong, in my opinion. And require something now and burden our county for the cost.
Yes.
And we can sue him.
That I don't know.
We can get the counties that want to, can sue him back, because I don't think he has a foot to stand on, on that. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Chair Keller, Commissioner Castanelli, I had a quick question for, could you clarify again or repeat the cost of the secure ballot boxes?
For your ballot boxes or fifty-five thousand for the onsite tabulators?
Got it, thank you.
And your, your, sorry, your office would rather have the ballot boxes and do them in-house than the tabulators, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, I, I mean, I've, I've struggled with how to secure that onsite. I, and I just, I, for the cost of them and the issues that they could cause onsite, the, you know, they're, they're assuring me that it's fast and it's, you know, not gonna have any problems, but then if that, if, if we get one, even two at some of our bigger locations, if one goes down, we're looking at backup, we're looking at, you know. I mean, I, I just think for security and the convenience for the voter, drop them in the ballot box, we can go pick them up throughout the day, bring them back to where we have a secure location to open that ballot box where it's sealed, run them through our commercial tabulators onsite. No one else is gonna have access to those, we can seal them, I mean, the chain of custody, it just makes sense not to use the tabulators for me. But I'm happy to take input on it.
You said not to use tabulators, I thought you said not to use ballot boxes.
The tabulator is the onsite tabulator that counts the votes at the poll location where which voter would feed those in, the ballot box is what I'm recommending.
I could have sworn I heard you say using the tabulators.
The tabular is onsite, so we have commercial.
Oh, I was thinking onsite, when I heard onsite, I was thinking.
I'm sorry, at the counting board here.
Now.
We have three commercial tabulators now that count a hundred ballots, a hundred ballots a minute, or a hundred ballots a batch.
I'm sure you said it correctly, it's my, so thank you for that clarification. Questions?
Chair Keller?
Go ahead, Commissioner Hendricks.
I just wanna thank our county clerk, I know she's been working on this diligently for, for months now and I appreciate, appreciate all the work she's put in and having her keeping us updated like this.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, seeing no more questions. It is ten of four and so we'll be going to time certain after a short break, we'll take a five-minute break. So we, quiet down, please. Great, you guys can all listen and talk, but the recording would be nightmarish. Well, this brings us to seven C. Time certain at ten o'clock for presentation only, presentation given by Ginger Threbs, Transportation Plan Coordinator, Multimodal Program Department, Nevada Department of Transportation. The follow-up on last year's NDOT County Workshop that was held July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Good morning, I'm Rebecca Capular, I'm the Assistant Director of Planning at NDOT. Ginger was helping us coordinate this, so she's not here today. And before I get started and do more introductions, I just wanna give you a brief overview of what I'm gonna be talking about in my presentation. I'll be introducing staff, we have a bunch of NDOT staff here that can help answer questions if something comes up that I need to call a friend for help on. I'm gonna go over the rural engagement process, our county workshops that were conducted last year. And then I'll wrap it up with NDOT accomplishments and county collaborations and then upcoming planned projects and then I'll be able to help answer any questions you might have. So can you go to the next slide, please? So with that, let me introduce my team with me, I've got Scott Heine and Joe Harrington, they're both from the Director's Office. And then with District, I have, I'm just gonna say first names Brew, Brew, Brent and Troy from District Two. You might have seen or collaborated with them, they do a lot of work out here in the county, they're really our rock stars that bring us information that if there's problems that are going on. Cause they're out in the field a lot and then last but not least is Gwynnavir and she's with our multimodal and planning team and works with Ginger, so thank you. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, I'm gonna go over the rural engagement process. Today's an opportunity for our NDOT leadership to talk to the county leadership. Typically, we're required by the CFR two hundred to come out once every five years, but we go above and beyond and on odd year, years, we work leadership to leadership and on even years, our staff meets with your staff and local staff to talk about what are the issues are going on, what collaboration, so this is part of that engagement process. It really promotes coordination and really helps us to make sure that our highways and roadways and our teams are working well and collaborating together. Our workshops are really meant to have us listen and hear what kind of needs are going on in the community and I'll cover that in a minute, but the processes work very well and after we go out to the counties, we're doing fourteen counties right now through, I believe will be done in October, early October, then our team will start wrapping these up, we try to communicate through email correspondence letters and have that rapport back and forth and then they'll start working on the next steps, which is the county workshops. We also use the One Nevada process and I would hope you're familiar with that because it was adopted in two thousand and eighteen and revisited and changed a little bit in twenty twenty, it is on our website, which is www.dot.nv.gov. And overarching goals, we have six of them for the One Nevada Plan. It helps us just to identify the critical areas of needs. They are enhance safety, preserve infrastructure, optimize mobility, transform economies, foster sustainability and connect communities and that's not in any random, I mean, that's random order, that's not in any chronological order. foster sustainability and connect communities. And that's not in any random, I mean, that's random order. That's not in any chronological order. Um, if we can please go to the next slide. So this kinda shows you our engagement process. Um, it's, it's continuous and circular. Um, even years, like I mentioned, are the workshops. And we try really hard to just, um, bring a theme, but listen and document what kinds of needs are being captured that need to be addressed and or verified and, um, evaluated. Once we collect all that, we communicate, like I said, and have the back and forth rapport. And then the analysis starts and that's where we go through and, um, look at the need, is it gonna build into a concept? Are they verified? And then we move on into where we are today, which is the county tour, and we're meeting with you. After today, we go back and bring additional needs. And then we rank all of our projects through the One Nevada Process, and it's very data-driven to help us have, uh, data-driven, um, project listing, so we can help identify what projects we can move forward funding allowable. Um, please move on to the next slide. Thank you. So, um, in July, almost a whole year ago, uh, we were here. When I say we, it wasn't me, it was Gwynnavir and her team, and, um, they met with staff. They had, um, identified six needs throughout the county. Um, the first few I'm gonna talk about are short-term. And one that was completed is, um, you'll see on the next slide under District Accomplishments. But there was an issue that was brought up about, um, an issue that pertained to truck traffic turning north at US ninety-five A and Main Street. Um, and it was not safe, so our district staff went out and they have relocated the stop bar. They've done that twice, and now those turning movements seem to be a lot smoother and, and safer. Um, and it is helping to improve that issue. Um, thank you for asking. It's firmly at US ninety-five A and State Route four twenty-seven, which is Main Street. Um, so hopefully you've seen that improvement. In process, um, it was brought to our attention that kids crossing, um, the street to get to Ferley High School is an issue over by ninety-five A and Farm District Road. I know personally, that's been an issue for a very long time because a long time ago, I started it in dot as Safe Routes to School and met, and we've been talking about this for a long time. The problem is, is that the speeds are very high, sixty-five to seventy miles per hour. And, um, I know our district staff has met with the mayor and talked about this. And, um, basically a solution would be for the city to create an ordinance to have a reduced speed zone there for the school zone. Um, once that's established, NDOT will be happy to collaborate, talk about infrastructure and improvements to have a reduced school zone, so we can have, um, the kids being able to get access to the school better. Um, I believe in the meantime, the school district as a, um, not, I, I don't love this personally, but it's an option. They have offered busing across the street to get kids there. They call it hazard busing. Um, of course, we wanna have active kids and have active beaver hoods and be able to walk to school, but that is an option in the meantime. That is a possible solution until we can get that school zone established. Before I go on to the mid-range and long-range, um, goals, I just wanna mention budget is very crucial to those. As I'm sure you're aware, um, our tr- Highway Trust Fund funding levels haven't really changed since nineteen ninety-three. And that's been a challenge for the state because when we're trying to improve and do projects based on nineteen ninety-three funding for twenty twenty-five funding with all the inflation we've seen, it's just getting harder and harder. So, um, some of these projects recently are, um, being federalized. We're trying to utilize as much of our federal dollars as possible and then, um, see how we can make our state dollar go further by using that. So, one mid-range, um, project that was identified was at the Goldfield, um, Avenue intersection at State Route three thirty-nine and US ninety-five A. Um, this intersection control needs improvements to manage the increased volumes due to regional growth. Um, there is, um, a preservation report identified. Um, it identified that it can be on the Project Improvement Program, the PIP, we call it. However, currently with budget constraints, um, that's preventing this project from moving forward. But it doesn't mean that it's off our radar. It's still on our radar and we've identified that. Um, there are three long-range, um, projects. One is, um, Dayton would like to have capacity improvements along US fifty to include four-lane frontage roads similar to what Sage Coach ha- Coach has, excuse me. Ferley, the second one is Ferley is concerned about capacity at US fifty and State Route eight twenty-eight, which is Farm District Road. Um, NDOT has partnered with the city and is conducting an NDOT Highway Corridor Study within city limits. Um, Pilot Road and State Route four twenty-eight Main Street. So we're doing a little bit more planning and, and research and looking at that. The last one is the corridor from Mount House through Dayton, and that remains a high priority for us and Campo. Um, Campo is conducting a corridor study and, um, that's supposed to be concluding soon. I do represent NDOT on the Campo Board, so, um, I am pretty involved and get to listen when they bring that forward. Um, along with, um, Commissioner Castanelli. Um, once they have their recommendations, they'll be provided, provided to the stakeholders. And our director is continuing to evaluate what's going to be the best solution and effective solution in that area. Um, if we can please move on to the next slide, um, this is where I'm gonna just talk about the District Accomplishments. Um, I already mentioned the first one that was completed with the stop bar and the truck traffic moving. Um, turn lanes, excuse me. Um, District has repaid State Route three thirty-nine in Yarrington and improved the shoulders in this area, as well as upgraded the milepost once the project was completed. So hopefully you've seen that if you've been out in that area. Um, and last, District continues to complete mains, maintenance and sign replacement, weed abatement and various minor improvements throughout the county on an as needed basis as we, um, continue our work, our daily, um, our daily work. So the, uh, next slide will be, um, our statewide transportation improvement program updates. Um, this is basically what we have in our, um, federal project list for upcoming projects. Their planned construction for both of these is twenty twenty-six. And that is subject to change if funding changes, but for right now, this is what we're looking at. The first one is US fifty in Dayton for a preservation project. Um, as you can see, the project limits are US fifty east of Dayton, Fortune Drive to Six Mile Canyon. And that's gonna, as I mentioned, be a pavement preservation where we do signage, striping, access control and signal installation and some lighting and, um, I T S drainage and improvements. The last one is, um, Yarrington Preservation Phase Two. And that one is to improve construction materials from the east of Pete Hendrick's Road to State Route two oh eight. It's realigning the irrigation ditch signage along, um, the area and improved lighting in the area as well. And my last slide, I have two, but the last one really doesn't wanna really count. But my last slide is just our next step. So our next steps is to continue our conversations, our collaboration. Um, listen to you today if you have any questions for us, and I'm happy to bring my team up. I do wanna mention that in twenty twenty-six, we will have a theme for the county workshops. And the theme is going to be focusing on opportunities, grants, services and partnerships. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and thank you again.
Start with the board, Commissioner Dixon.
Thank you, too. Um, so you touched on the victory logistics and punching that through the fifty. Um, Nevada Pacific Parkway, I believe. It's all been, um, frustrating to me, um, but does the railroad kick in on anything and provide any assistance when we're crossing the railroad tracks and new developments such as that?
Provide anything as in, in funding?
Even if they just provide, provided in making the process of punching those roads across quicker and easier, or are there a barrier?
I'm smiling at you because I've had some challenges working with the railroad. Um, it's, it's a different ballgame and I recently, and I, when I say recently, it's been about a year and a half been working on some infra grants in Elko, and that's another area, but, um, it's, it's a challenging situation.
I don't, I don't fully understand that, but billions of dollars in commerce come through North and the Long County every day and on the, every year and, I don't, um, and, and I'm not trying to switch topic, but it does, the, it does affect a lot of commuters because Ferley and some of these others are bedroom communities. Um, as far as I eighty and the safety on that, there's, we have just a lot of people. I, I was speaking specifically from the Ferley area. And the safety of I eighty is, is brutal. Are you still looking at doing possible toll road, uh, some of that? And I've heard a third language in Loxo County there, but there's just a lot of Ryan County residents use that. Um, what timeline is at it? Uh, for example, yesterday took me an hour and a half and there was great runoff again. Um, on the side of the road that it rear-ended somebody. Uh, it's just, could you touch on, on what, what that is, is roll for as far as plans for the commuters?
For I eighty?
Yes.
So we do.
And last, but.
So, yes, I meant I eighty east of Sparks. Thank you.
Yeah.
So we do have a federal grant we got to do a widening, um, and it's planned for twenty-seven. Is that correct? Thank you, Scott Znotting. He's my phone friend. Um, so we are in the process of doing, looking at that. It's going to be a design build project, which will help us be more efficient and get that done quicker. Um, in the meantime, it's just gonna be challenging and because there's so many shifts.
It's a death trap.
Yes, it is. And it's, it's, it's a shift working, so having to figure out when the best time to do the construction is stuff we're looking at now. Um, but the good news is, is we got a two hundred and seventy million dollar grant for that. And so that is a priority. Um, our director has told us it's one of our number one priorities. And, um, that's on the books to get.
Residents from Ryan County do travel that stretch for sure. Um, appreciate you touching on some of those other areas. And then was there still a roundabout plan between, uh, by Cottonwood and ninety-five A possibly? Uh, to alleviate that?
Yes, we talked about that this morning. Is that the one we talked about this morning? Um, can you remind me when it was planned for? I can't remember, or are we studying it? Studying it. Thank you. So we are evaluating that through some of our corridor studies. Um, and it's not a hundred percent confirmed that it's going in, but we are looking at that currently.
And then, uh, but Mount Hall area, I know you touched on that. I moving, I visited the cemetery and took a left. And, uh, I, I felt like I was closing my eyes and punching it. So that's, I just had to throw that out there, that that stretch is very much on everybody's mind in Lion County, so.
And I, and I appreciate that. I did talk one-on-one with the director on Friday. Um, and Tracy did tell me she knows, she drives it every day as well. And she's just trying to find out what the best solution is and, and there's high speeds and it's wide. And there are pedestrians, but not a lot of them. So it's a challenging situation and we're still looking at that.
And then, I was just curious, is there a way, um, and maybe this is N H P more or, but semis, passing semis, is there a way to keep semis in the, in the far right lane? Um, semi's not allowed to pass or whatever. Um, I, I don't know if that's a possibility, but you, you get behind a semi passing another semi and it's fifteen mi- ten miles for them to get around them. I don't, is there, does that, anything creative that way ever? And I'm not saying that's creative, but.
Is that allowable?
Yeah.
I don't know, but that's a good question, and I made a note of it and we can look at that and have staff follow up. Is there a specific area that you're wanting us to look at or is it?
Well, for sure, I eighty.
Eighty?
Burnley to Reno. Burnley to Reno for sure, but, um, you know, I, I think that could be definitely as well, uh, up that Dayton Hill, the Mount House, um, and, and through the Mount House area, to be honest with you, yeah, but just a thought.
Okay, it's, it's, you know, sometimes it's those back and neck and thoughts that make something happen, so we can look at it. Thank you.
Yeah, first of all, I appreciate all the work you're doing between Wilson Canyon and Yarrington. Um, three thirty-nine is looking fantastic down there. I would hope that you continue from basically Goldfield North on leveling the pavement with the shoulder, because there are some areas where it drops four to six inches. I don't think if you needed to pull off on the shoulder, you would survive the railroad. Um, so, you know, please continue going north. I'm sure that most of the commissioners that go down to the intersection of Goldfield and three thirty-nine, ninety-five A, um, would appreciate having an escape route if they needed. Uh, that brings me to Goldfield and, um, three thirty-nine, ninety-five A. Um, I know you're looking at that, but I certainly would hope that you would really get on it, because that is a terrible intersection. I've seen so many opportunities for crashes, people coming from the left heading north. And some of them making a left turn. At the same time, you can't see cars coming your way. If they, if we were to control in there, that'd be great, or do something to allow us to have better visibility left and right. Uh, for the last couple of years, the Douglas County T R E G I D and my Smith Valley Civilian Advisory Board have been talking about eastbound traffic on two oh eight through T R E, up over Jack Wright Pass. And then the kind of a blind curve as you come down the Smith Valley. Uh, at upper column, lower column, traffic's doing fifty-five miles an hour. And, and you, you come around the curve there and you can't see anybody that stopped making a left turn. So I've seen many, many, many skid marks when people slamming on the brakes once they realize someone stopped there making a left turn. But those are basically the, the problems that I see in District Five.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Hendricks or Commissioner Castanelli?
Uh, yeah, I'd, I'd like to know if NDOT's looked at all, uh, making improvements on ninety-five A between Silver Springs and Yarrington. Because the, the traffic has increased in there so much. And there's no, very few good places to pass and it's just, it's getting really dangerous.
Sorry, I'm jotting this down. Um, let me turn to my team and see if anybody is aware of any studies we are doing or currently doing. If not, we'll jot this down and we can definitely look into it. We're gonna, um, get back to you on that one. Scott's, Scott's doing some magic on his phone and gonna find out. Um, do you have anything else, Commissioner Hendricks, while we?
No, just that section of road. I know we're gonna be having a lot of development at the north end of Mason Valley. And things are already really bad on that road, so I'm just concerned.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Castanelli, I know you're, um, doing stuff with Campo with them, but did you have any other questions?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Chair Keller, and, uh, thank you Rebecca for the presentation. And, um, yeah, just to kinda piggyback on what Commissioner Jacobson, uh, mentioned with the, uh, I know, I know Campo's plan on the Highway fifty corridor is, um, you know, in, uh, moving forward, um, but I think just outside of that, uh, footprint was the, uh, the Dayton Hill. And a truck lane, uh, ascending Dayton Hill, westbound, uh, Highway fifty would be ideal at some point. Um, because anybody that, that commutes that road often gets, uh, stuck behind a truck, or if you get two trucks trying to pass each other, it's, it's, you know, it's just crazy, but a truck lane ascending that hill would be ideal. Uh, hopefully even extend it all the way to the three forty-one junction that would facilitate the egress of the upcoming gravel trucks coming out of that proposed pit there. Um, one thing you and I had talked offline about was the, uh, the Shady Lane Bridge in downtown Old Town Dayton. Um, hoping that that still is, uh, in the queue, even if it's just a, a, a a box covert or something there, because, um, that does, uh, have a, a, a impact when we have any kind of road closure. any kind of road closure on Pike Street uh to have that secondary egress is uh very important. Um, I think that's, that's all I have.
On the bridge, I'm glad you brought that up. Um, it still is in queue and as I mentioned when we talked previously, um, if I see any changes to that, I will personally let you know, but as of now, I haven't seen any changes. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
You have a, you have a passing lane planned, but it's out past twenty twenty nine. We have to study that area.
Okay, so I don't know if y'all heard that. We do have a passing lane planned in that area that Commissioner Hendricks brought up. It's um out past twenty twenty nine. It's been identified as a need and it is on our radar.
When you say out in that area, I thought she said ninety five. So.
Silver Springs and.
That's a long stretch. That's why I was asking, do you know where?
We can get back to you on that.
Is anybody driving down that knows what it's like and you paved, you, you stopped all passing for a while and then you came back and put the couple in. I know there's one there where you got a passing lane, a short one, that if anybody tried to pass in that, that's just taking your own life in your hand. It's.
We'll get, we'll get the milepost number to you. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I did have a couple of things. One, on your slide presentation, don't take it, uh, take it bad or anything. I appreciate everything, but could you put the uh categories in for that Nevada one that you mentioned into the slide?
Oh, yes.
That would be helpful so that you can see, see what you're, what you're talking about because when you, when you talk about it, sometimes I miss them. You, you did miss the, the highway widening project that you guys accomplished on highway fifty uh going into Churchill along the lake and that really did a lot of good work out there. So I wanted to get, take credit for that. I wanted to know, so we get these meetings every year, you know, that counter, how often do you meet with our staff with all the construction, all the new projects that we're meeting? Are you on a email uh chain or are you guys meeting in person?
I might ask Boo to come up from district because I think what you're asking is with new development or permits, what kind of collaboration we have. If I'm understanding you correctly, Boo, do you mind helping me out with that? He was like, I'm not ready for that stuff. But, but those usually come into district and I know that you guys collaborate with people when you get requests for.
So Commissioner, what's a question regarding highway projects or whether regarding permits?
Highway projects and well, everything, I saw both of them. Uh, we're constantly getting new development coming into the area. And I'm like, that's the last planning commission that they were talking about putting up a temporary light, which I'm not really happy about. Uh. I, I just want to know what the collaboration is instead of waiting for the problem to hit and how, how it builds up because you guys can see we have a project here, 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 here. But you guys can also see the projects and stuff that are happening downstream like in Hawthorne and, you know, truck traffic, you can get uh the whole, the whole region. Because if you, if you drive ninety five A, well, I eighty, just about all of them, we're getting more and more traffic every day. And sometimes these, when you look at a project, only the project and what's constrained on that project, it's just adding to the problem. It's not being a solution, more frontage roads and stuff like that that are just gonna, you know, long term.
One thing, one thing that I want to mention that I didn't, and I'm sorry, I should have brought this up. We have a new position that's been approved by the legislative, um, last legislative session. And it's for governmental, rural governmental engagement person. I know I'm not saying their title correctly, but that person will be coming aboard after October when we are able to um recruit for it. Um, and that staff is going to be working with the commissioners, the, the um city staff, the county staff, and excuse me, county commissioners, the city um commissions, so on a higher level and be able to see those kinds of connections. So um, we, we know that sometimes we don't see that. And so we're trying to bring in somebody else to help us have more um outreach and, and communication with the rural communities to connect those dots, just like you're saying. So I'm hopeful that there'll be some better communication moving forward. And we know that's been a challenge. Um, but Boo, did you have anything else to add to?
Thank you, Rebecca. On for the record, my name is Boot Pinder Sandu, District Two Engineer based out of Sparks, Nevada. I have Northwest in Nevada. And I am already operation, which is construction maintenance and the permits and traffic. Which also includes the um road operational center to operate and controls the, the cameras in our areas. Um, if I understand your question right, um, the first question was about the new development such as permits. When a, when a permittee sub um comes in to any county, any area, um, and they, and they request a permit for a new development. Um, usually they go to the county and the city first and they'll get some sort of unconditional of approval. From there, they will submit their plans to the department for review. So if they have a bit less case in point, a big distribution center is coming in, that's going to generate a lot of truck trap, traffic and vehicle traffic. We, they, they are required to do traffic impact studies, which is then coordinated with the counties or the local en- entities. And once the local counties and entities are happy with that, then they come to the department. And then we work with them to make sure they have the proper turn pockets, the acceleration lanes, the deceleration lanes. So that, I believe, answers the question. There is that type of communication between the district staff uh for new developments and the county and the city staff. Does that answer? Did I, did I understand?
You, you are as far as one individual, I'm looking at the uh like the whole stretch, but because something happened in a different community, a different county could highly impact us. And, and when you're doing a traffic study, that has to be brought in. Usually the traffic studies outdated by the time I get it, it seems like, so.
Yeah, the, the regional in impact, we always rely on the counties and the, and the cities because they know what they're gonna be approving. The department can only look in that immediate area um for the, for that immediate permittee. And again, it's first come, first served. So you could have a gas station come in or you could have a Walmart dis- distribution center come in. It depends on who gets it first and the second developer then have to take into account what is already existing in around that area.
But I think forward thinking is we're trying to get that new position on board to help us understand the holistic needs through the communities and connecting those dots and it might help us be better.
Yeah, especially from community to community because we get a lot of temporary traffic and stuff because we've got Greenlink coming through, we'll have data centers, we'll have, so you know, all kinds of stuff that come into the prior that could really screw up the program. Uh, I'd really like an introduction when that person comes on or, and also can you mention to have him uh speak with Nico?
Yes.
Because that would help us out with that coordination.
Your hand, Joe. He's our communications director. That new position will be under him. So he heard you loud and clear. We'll make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh, you probably heard me say it a hundred times, but I'll keep saying it. I want to work toward that highway fifty, getting it to the freeway standards.
I haven't heard a hundred and fifty, but maybe a hundred and forty nine, just kidding.
I start sending you emails.
Awesome. Well, I appreciate the conversation today. Thank you, Tim, for having us. Oh, yes.
Because we all talk and then it raises questions from everyone. So I'm gonna go past our board one more time. Commissioner Jacobson, just want to thank you for being here and you and your team, Rebecca. It was, it was greatly appreciated to get these updates and to have you here. Um, I think the public enjoys it as well. Um, and then another project that uh, I know uh Commissioner Keller brought up that won by La Hotten, but the shoulder work right before Damon's curve between Fernley and Silver Springs is, is, was great work. I know it took a few weeks, so, but, but kind of addressed some of Commissioner Hockaday's concerns down south, but that, that was, they did a really nice job on a lot of that. I know some floodwater just threw that area up a little bit in the past, but, but uh, but that was, um, that's a nice uh preventative and, and work that you, they did, your crew did on that as well. Yeah.
Yes, thank you very much for being here and, and actually taking notes and giving us some information back. Appreciate it.
Hopefully I can read my notes. No, I'm kidding.
We'll remind you again.
I hope.
Commissioner Hendricks?
No, I just want to thank you for your report and I look forward to hearing back from you on the ninety five A issues.
I believe they said they were going to put the passing lane from Silver Springs to.
Yeah. Yeah, that works.
It will work out great. John Kasonelli?
Uh, nothing further. Just uh, thank you, Rebecca. Appreciate the information.
Sorry for not using your title. I just read it across the screen there. And uh, thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for your team to, to be here. And now you guys can go back to work and enjoy that highway all the way.
Thank you.
Actually, about this time, it's probably pretty good. That's why they time it for this. They know when the traffic's easier. Okay, that brings us to seven noon time certain, ten o'clock AM. A report to given, to be given for the Community Development Block Grant, C D B G, opening for applications fiscal year twenty five, twenty six.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Martha Tapia for the record. I'm here before you this morning to announce the opening of the Community Development Block Grant or C D B G application cycle for two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six. The project funding for this application cycle is approximately two point nine million dollars. With C B D, C D B G looking to approve fewer but larger grants with an emphasis on maximizing community impact. C D B G is looking to use more dollars for economic development activities. Since nineteen eighty two, Lion County has received a little over six million in C D B G funds for projects such as the Walker River Economic Corridor Economic Study, Healthy Communities Silver Springs Food Pantry and the Silver Springs Mutual Water Company Valve Replacement. The C D B G program enables local governments to undertake a wide variety of activities primarily for low and moderate income persons. The C D B G program aims to fund projects that meet the national objectives, which are benefit fifty one percent or more of low and moderate income persons, aid in the prevention or elimination of slime, slum or blight, excuse me, meet community development needs having a particular urgency when other sources of funding are not available. For a project to be fundable, it must pass three tests. It must meet a nation, a national object, objective. It must have an eligible activity such as sewer water lines, streets, sidewalks or curbs and gutters. It must be a governor's office of economic development priority of economic development with an emphasis on infrastructure. The public is invited to provide input and submit projects for this program year. I can assist interested persons who are unfamiliar with the C D B G application process to submit an application for a project. This board will hear presentations of potential C D B G applications at the August twenty first meeting. The applications that pass eligibility will be heard and ranked by this board at the November twentieth meeting. Written comments and project ideas may be directed to the Lion County Manager's Office and that contact information is included in the staff report in the agenda packet. I look forward to working with any potential applicants in hopes that the project will be awarded fun- funds through C D B G to improve our communities here in Lion County. Thank you, and I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Questions, I uh, how many people are applying for this right now? Do you? Do we have anybody interested that you know of or?
Not that I know of.
Cause I'd like to know what we're doing to try to, to get the C D B G so we, we get money back into Lion County. If I don't want to be passing on anything, so I don't know what the outreach is.
Yeah, I'm personally not aware of any projects at this time.
Commissioner Hendricks or Commissioner Kasonelli?
Just one quick question. The, the uh, the packet indicates that it can be used for non-housing, community development needs, uh, including streets and sidewalks and uh, I'm just wondering if it makes sense to do, to look at any kind of um frontage road or intersection um alignments to in the mound house corridor to, to, you know, kind of get prepared for what N D O T is planning there, but um that's just something I was thinking out loud.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Kasonelli brought up a point too. Uh, I, I don't need an answer now because I'm sure you have to look, but I'd like to know if you can use any of the C D B G for engineering or any of those kind of things that we need on roads?
I mean, in studies, I believe you are.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager. So in the past, um, they favored actual projects over planning um projects. I, I mean, it's not to say that we couldn't put in an application, but uh, typically I've seen where those don't get funded as, as much as the actual projects that are ready to go.
Or if we don't have any, I'd like to at least push something like that out and see if we can't because sometimes we're between a rock and hard spot. I'm going out for funding and not have the engineering stuff done ahead of time. Okay, no more questions? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mark. Okay, this brings us to fifteen human services, fifteen A for report only, presentation by Lion County Human Services, five year strategic plan twenty twenty six to twenty thirty. Dr. Holmes?
Oh, yours have a click for me?
Hi.
Sometimes it, sometimes it like me. Sorry, Martha.
Good morning, Shayla Holmes, Director, Lion County Human Services. For the record, uh, this past year, we went through the strategic planning for the next five years of Lion County Human Services. Uh, so, well, about fifteen years ago, we did our first five year strategic plan. My predecessor, Edri La Boy, shifted us from a one year plan to a three year plan, having a five year plan. It's important to note that the five year plan works best for our department in the sense that we've built up our internal infrastructure to the place now where we're working on larger systemic and larger community issues that take time. And so the five year strategic plan really allows us to um work through those things. So you guys have two pieces of information. One, this presentation and then the strategic plan itself, which should, if it's not already available on the Lion County website, should be within the next day or so. Um, but pages five through six is the background and introduction. The key sections are our vision, mission and services, our strategic direction, and then the organizational outline of the report. So you can just navigate through it, hop to the places that are most important to you. Next slide, please. The vision and mission of Lion County Human Services is date the same. The mission of the department is to enhance the well-being of individuals and families across the lifespan. And the vision is that community members are empowered, connected and supported. The guiding principles have changed. So the guiding, we went through a internal work group to identify what guiding principles really relate and work within our department and our staff. And we landed on integrity and collaboration, respect and compassion and adaptability. We feel that these words are encompassing of the direction we're taking and where we're working towards. The services offered and compared to our last five year strategic plan, we've added behavioral health services. Although you guys have been with us on that journey, so that's not new news to you. It is new from the past five year strategic plan. Uh, important to note, we serve the lifespan. So we also have children's services, adult services, senior services and an administrative arm that assists us in grant management and logistics. I consider them our logistical glue. The next section of our strategic plan document is the planning approach. So that's pages seven through eight. The key sections of this are uh the phase one, we did it in phases. Uh, laying the foundation was phase one, listening and learning. So our environmental scan was phase two. Uh, phase three was setting priorities and planning ahead and phase four was finalizing the strategic plan. So laying the foundation, uh, what we did was we gathered an internal team, which was our division managers and we asked County Manager Haskin to participate and he graciously agreed. Um, and from there, after identifying our steering committee, we as a group identified what key indicators were going to be utilized to inform our strategic plan and then establish templates as far as what we wanted the end result to look like. Uh, next phase, please. Sorry for that out of place arrow, but the next section was the listening and. Sorry for that out of place arrow, but the next section was the listening and learning and the environmental scan. So data was used to create a community context report. I'm going to do that a little bit more in depth during your Board of Health meeting here in a few minutes. Uh, but that was a gathering of secondary data. So we did, I suppose I probably should have mentioned this in the beginning. This was contracted out through Social Entrepreneurs Incorporated. We did not do this work in-house. Why? Because we are not uh, strategic planners by nature and having them as our regular and consistent contractor. They've done our last two with us. They're very relevant organization, and they give us a really great deal. Um, but they're the ones who went out and summarized all of this data for us because that is a full-time job in itself. So the items listed there in the secondary data is the data sources that they went out, they mined, they pulled all the information relevant to Lyon County and synthesized that for us in a beautiful community context report, which is available on our website, and I'll be doing a more in-depth presentation like I mentioned. Um, and what they did was they put together key trends for us to bring back to the steering committee so we could be informed on how we wanted to move our strategic plan forward. Next phase, please. Uh, or actually, this phase continued. So the steering committee really wanted to make sure that when we did the second part, so it was a survey to the community, and then we did focus groups. So we actually went out to different sections of the county and fed them, gave them a dinner, and asked them questions. And, uh, really what we were hoping to do with both that survey and that focus group were identify people who were eligible for services but not accessing them. We serve, last year, we served a little over three thousand folks within the county, but we do know that there's a significant importance of the population that's eligible. And why are we not attracting them? What is, what could we do better to enhance our services for the entire community? Because we do do an internal survey for existing clients. So I have their data. I know what they want more of. But I don't know what I don't know from the folks not accessing us. So that was really critical, and that formed our community engagement plan. We were trying to be strategic with how we gained this information from the community. Next phase, please. So from that, we planned a two-day strategic planning retreat where my division managers and County Manager Haskin and myself uh, were almost locked in a room in our friendly community slash senior center and went over all of the information collected and synthesized by SEI for us. So that included all of the surveys from the community. That included the information from the focus groups, all of those data sets in the community context report. And that is what led us into developing our critical issues and our goals for the next five years. And then the final phase, it looks really simple, but, uh, it was SEI taking all of the work we did in that two-day retreat, all of the work they did previously in the last, previous two phases, and put it all together in the beautiful report that you guys have in front of you. The environmental scan is pages nine through thirteen. Uh, and what that is, is just a quick overview of what the community context report is. We didn't want to duplicate that in two reports. The other thing I want to highlight, although I'll touch on it again in the community context report presentation, is that we keep that report separate because it's heavily utilized by not only our, um, internal operations to help us when we're preparing for grant applications, future funding, where we should be focusing different issues on, um. It also is a report that could be utilized by our nonprofit peers, all of the other organizations we partner with. We want us utilizing the same core data set. So we're all looking at the same issues and being consistent in what we're trying to do for our community. So that's why we try to keep that separate. Um, within that section, you'll also find our internal staff surveys from twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, and then the one that we did uniquely for the twenty twenty-five strategic plan. All of that to say, what was identified from all of that data gathering were some key trends. One, our senior population is growing. I don't think that that's news to anyone, but the data supports it. Uh, two, our children and families have special needs that need to be addressed. And three, we need to better understand the profile of LCHS service recipients. The next slide, please. So from that, we identified needs and potential service gaps. So number one, and I suppose these aren't listed in any one specific priority. All four of these are very important. Um, but housing and homelessness was listed first. It is a critical component that we need to figure out when you think of, uh, what's important for children, families, and seniors. Well, they need to have a house or a place to live that's safe and healthy. Uh, two, we have regions that have heightened vulnerability in different sections. So it's really interesting to see how that data played out. Lyon County, as you guys know, is vast, and each of our communities within Lyon County have different needs and different service populations, and we tried really hard to be intentional with how we built this with that specific information. Health and mental health access is a challenge. That is number three. And service awareness and barriers to access is number four. So knowing that these critical issues and identifying these service gaps led us to figuring out what our goals and our objectives are going to be over the next five years. Uh, staff surveys, so I have lost my words nonetheless. Um, it's important to know that the strategic plan's not just for what we're doing with the community, but also what we're doing internally. So ensuring that our internal structure is strong and that we are taken care of in-house is just as important as what we're doing out in the community. And we wanted our strategic plan to reflect what we needed to do internally as well. And so we did, uh, internal staff survey. We do this every year, and then there was another one done specifically for the strategic plan. So what you can see is that they generally have a positive experience within our department as far as staff members go, but, um, in twenty twenty-four, we did have some hiccups in regards to progress with personal development or professional development. And then, uh, sometimes feeling like their coworkers were fully committed to the job. Next slide, please. So the key themes when we sat in our strategic planning retreat was what are we going to do to support the need for employees? What are we going to do to support the need for our people served? What makes Lyon County a great place to work and live? And then what are the conditions that make Lyon County a difficult place to work and live? I don't think that anything on here is super, um, eye-opening. I think it's pretty, uh, well-known. Um, some important things to note on here is that we are going to be working on more meaningful and concrete support from the management team for our staff. We continue to work on increasing funding and resources. And then some things to highlight as far as what makes Lyon County a great place to work and live is that we have a strong sense of community. We have a small-town atmosphere, and we have a natural beauty and an amazing quality of life out here in Lyon County. And so we really want to leverage those strengths. Next slide, please. We also asked our staff for what goals they would like us to be working on. So while we had a steering committee, we also didn't want to negate the other forty-five voices within Lyon County Human Services. They're the ones out there doing the work, and they have a pretty good insight as far as what our community members need. So they came up with this list, which is to expand services and supports with a special focus on mental and behavioral health. To explore new services and supports, what? We don't know, but that's what we're using the data to support that, that exploration. Um, expand the reach of existing services, enhance existing service delivery and its accessibility, strengthen internal and external communication efforts, increase and diversify funding and always ongoing mission, and improve internal operations and optimize infrastructure to support service provision. So it wasn't exactly their words, but this is how it was synthesized for us from the contractor. All of those surveys went directly to the contractor, so they were able to review it, keep it neutral, and then regurgitate it back out to us into something useful. Um. So the critical issues that we've narrowed down to after all of that information are on pages fourteen through fifteen. And it's residents lack awareness about service eligibility. We've been doing some things over the last couple of years with that, but we want to continue to be intentional with how we educate the community of what's available to them. There is a lack of access to health services. Uh, Commissioner Jacobson, I think you were just working on something with this with CHA. We're really excited to continue on that, but it is a part of our strategic plan to figure this out and keep moving this forward. Uh, growing and complex needs of service populations across the lifespan and being intentional with the data on how we can work within that. Next slide, please. And then maintaining and strength, strengthening internal systems and culture. That's what we're doing in-house for our staff and how we continue to become the best Lyon County Human Services ever. And then resource and capacity limitations. All of this to say, we were aware and continue to be aware that there are changes within the federal government structure that put some ambiguity around what grants look like and what funding will look like over the next several years. I wish I could tell you that that was new, but grant funding always has a level of uncertainty to it. And so we are consistently and constantly planning for that and trying to diversify and trying to be flexible and adaptable. So while we kept that in mind, we didn't want to plan the next five years focusing on this mindset that there might be less or different. We wanted to plan with what we currently know right now and what our community needs, knowing that we're always going to continue to be flexible and adaptable and figuring out the funding thing. Because that's an issue every year. Next slide, please. So to wrap it all up, we've got goals and objectives. This is the, all of that was to get us to this point. So what are we going to be working on for twenty-five to twenty thirty? Which is a little weird to say. Uh, Lyon County residents will be aware and knowledgeable of LCHS services, how to access them, and whether they are eligible. Number two is that Lyon County's most vulnerable residents will be connected to whole-person services and supports. Number three is that LCHS will foster strong relationships with community partners to meet the needs of the growing focus populations. Number four is LCHS will maintain and strengthen internal systems that acknowledge, empower, engage, and support its team members. Next slide, please. So goal one, and I'll go through these fairly quickly because I'm not going to read all of the, um, objectives there. But goal one, Lyon County residents will be aware and knowledgeable of LCHS services. So those are exactly what we just did on the previous slide. But we're working on these, so it's important to note for the next four slides. We have different timeframes, and they layer and grow upon each other to get us to reach that goal. Within the strategic planning document itself, you can also find broken-down strategies and plans that we're going to do and who's going to lead them. So all of that is available to you within the strategic plan. It's important to note also that with each lead, while they are responsible for ensuring that we do those objectives and do that plan, the entire department is at their disposal as far as support goes. So whether they feel that needs to be done through a committee, a task force, external partnerships, whatever that looks like, and we'll continue to support whatever lead is taking on which one of these objectives to make it happen. You can go through the next several slides. It's all of the different goals and the objectives over time. Uh, we tried to be really thoughtful in how we were planning out the timeline, so that way we weren't biting off more than we can actually accomplish within any one timeframe, um, or year. And then in layering them as far as what needs to happen, because many of these goals intertwine and some of these objectives intertwine. Keep going. So then here on review and plans to update, this is the final section of the report aside from the appendices. Um, we're committed, but it's important to put it on paper because if you don't make the plan, you don't do the plan. So we are committed as a department to reviewing monthly within our management team meetings as far as where are we at with what needs to be happening in which months. So tracking all of those things we said we do in the objectives. Quarterly, we do staff meetings, so we're going to be accountable to our staff through quarterly presentations. And then annually, coming here and presenting to you guys what we are doing as well as to the community and to our granters, depending on who requires us to have a strategic plan and what they need to know about it. Um, and our annual implementation plan will review that every year in June to get us ready for the following fiscal year and make sure that we've got the lead, the lead knows what they're doing, and they're working with who they need to internally to make it happen. Then you've got a ton of appendices. You can go find all of the stuff we talked about in extreme detail. Uh, you have got A, B, and C, and then you've got additional amount in the community context report. I think that's it. Any questions?
Commissioner Jacobson. Thanks, Chair. Uh, I think Coach McKay once said, how did you know you needed a five-year plan? And he said, because I had a five-year contract. Right? So you must have a five-year contract.
Well, you know, I think I said this morning, I wake up every day, and I'm like, yep, I'm going to do it today. So I mean, I'll keep coming for the next five years.
Yeah, so hopefully longer than that. Uh, first of all, thanks to you and your team, um, for all this work. That's a, it's a lot of work. I don't want to diminish that at all. So when you're collecting some of this data, um, I'm assuming, and maybe not, but when people utilize your services or they offered a survey or asked a few questions to collect information if they're willing to? Is that how you collect some of that data?
So that, that's like a multi-pronged approach, right? So some of the data comes just from the referral and intake process. So we're able to gather, how did you hear about us? What are your primary needs right now? So we know what they're coming in asking for based off of the referral and intake information. We also do have surveys for clients post uh, their experience with us. Some folks are are with us for a long time, and so that's just continually offered to them at different intervals during their service period. And then we also have QA built in within our different programs. So they all operate that a little different. Some are mandated by some grants to be done in a specific way. We do have policy within Lyon County Human Services that if there's not a grant mandated QA or quality assurance, then we develop one. So an example in our senior services program, our program supervisor randomly selects twenty percent of closed cases and calls them and says, did we meet your needs? Is there anything you'd like me to know? And all of that information is then housed, reviewed on a pretty regular basis, and then also was provided to SEI when it came to developing the strategic plan.
Right on. That's all I had. Thank you.
Commissioner, yeah. And, and I did attend one of your outreach, um, very good meal. I'm sorry that a lot more people didn't come and discuss issues that, uh, they believe were important. So I appreciate all that you do to reach out to the community constantly, and, and, uh, it, it does help, I think, in getting that input back.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Hendricks?
Um, no questions. I just want to thank you for the report and let you know how much we appreciate all that you, you and your staff do for our community.
Commissioner Casonelli?
Thank you, Chair Keller. Yeah, and, uh, thank Dr. Holmes on the presentation. Um, I, like I mentioned earlier, I'm kind of working on the transportation aspect here and, and, um, one of the things that uh, I continue to hear is a lot of the citizens don't know about the transportation uh, resources that we do have available. And, um, I know we can find our county transportation from the senior centers, um, that's available on the county website, but are there, there's other resources out there, and I don't know if there's somewhere that citizens can go to find those, uh, those other, uh, transportation resources. And that may not even be a question for you, but, um, anyway, that, that seems to be a, a common, um, issue is the lack of transportation as you, you have identified, and I'm, I'm hoping we can improve on that.
Absolutely. We're constantly working with our transportation partners to figure out how we, that, um, as you mentioned, Commissioner Casonelli, your goal to connect to jump around Carson has been something that we have talked about for many years. So I'll be really excited if we can figure out that logistics. Um, for, uh, the sake of the question, as far as do we, we do publish a resource directory. It is updated annually, and then updates can be requested by the community if they identify or if another partner wants to be added to it. That is available on our county website. Um, it, we might consider wanting to link to that on our livebetterlyon.org since we are pushing that out as well. But there is a community resource directory that we develop and maintain, and that does have a transportation section within it. Um, and then if at any point in time, any partner wants to share with us on social media or anything like that, we're happy to push out messaging as, as requested or available.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I do want do want to thank you for report. Think you hit it on the nail on the head with the seniors and then going into the children and and the families of what I can see is there's been a big problem with daycare in that sector. So hopefully the private industry will pick up on that. You did mention the housing and homelessness, uh, a lot of that is being imported into the area because, and we don't really have the, the, the way to handle it, but because of choice, drugs, mental health, those kinds of things that need to be pushed somewhere else. So I'm really interested in how that's going to go. The health human services are huge in Naco, and when I just went to the, to the meeting, they they, there's going to be a lot of change. I I I feel sorry for your department. Really bad. Uh, it's changing. It's getting modified. Things are being eliminated. You, where you normally went, you might still have it, but you got to find out where it's at because it moved it. Uh, so and with Dodge, Doge, whatever I want to call it, they're running that through the Senate every week and they eliminate different things. So you're going to have some challenges ahead and and I thank you for the report, but I'm sorry.
I appreciate your condolences. Um, we did run into that in the creation of this report. Some of the data that we were utilizing locally, SEI had downloaded it and backed it up because through the making of and going through this process, some of those things dropped off and were no longer available for us to access. So when we go back to do this in twenty thirty in regards to being able to find a continuum of data and utilize the same thing, um, we don't know what the future holds for us there, but we'll see.
Thank you.
All right, sixteen A for possible action. Consider a petition by BBCJ Investors LLC to enlarge the boundaries of the Dayton Mound House Water and Sewer Service Area to include APN zero one six three eight one oh four and to authorize the board chair to sign an order to incorporate the property. Mr. Sinclair.
Morning Commissioner Sean Sinclair, Lyon County Utilities Intern Director for the record. And we have a petition from BBCJ Investors to enlarge our existing boundaries of that Dayton Mound House water and super service area to include APN sixteen three eighty one zero four. What I wanted to show here was that everything inside the blue line, it's not the entire service area, but in in this general area we're discussing. Um, that's our existing service area. The box in red is the parcel petition to be included. Next slide, please. Just wanted to show here where our existing utilities are currently located. Um, it's important to note that actually kind of front this property here. So they're actually right next to it. Next slide, please. Final slide. A couple, couple keynotes. And a lot of the uh affluent issues we have in currently going on Lyon County wanted to mention that BBC Investors has acknowledged that the inclusion of this parcel within the service area does not guarantee the availability of water or sewer resources to this parcel. Also, the county may be, may require temporary to temporarily suspend the sewer connections within the Dayton service area due to limitations on the affluent disposal capacity. Um, and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions? Commissioner online? No questions from commissioners online?
No.
And a motion? For color on the conversation, um, to enlarge the boundaries of the Dayton Mound House Water and Service Area to include eighteen zero one six dash three eight one dash zero four and authorize the board chair to sign an order to incorporate the property.
Second, have a commit uh motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Hockaday. Do we have any public comment? In the room? Or online?
Here we'll go to a vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Okay, seventeen board appointments. For possible action, appoint two members of Lyon County Board of Trustees with the term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty nine. Lyon County Library Board of Trustees recommends the recommends appointment of Sarah Ross representing Dayton area and appointment of one trustee representing Silver Springs area. Lyon County Library Board of Trustees could not reach consensus on recommendation for the Silver Springs area. Kay Edwards received two votes. If I had a color, receive two votes. This point, I'm going to step down as chair because by the color is my wife and so I will step down. And I will turn it over to Commissioner Hendricks. Uh, you know, before I open this up, because I did rule it in, but we haven't had any discussion. Do you guys want a break before this might be long? So let's take a a five-minute break just so that, because we might be here for a while. Please take your seats. So we have a new development, so uh don't kill the messenger. Uh.
Mister Chair, um, we had the Board of Health listed as a time certain at eleven AM. Uh, Senator Titus is joining us via Zoom and I I believe she has an appointment after this. So um, requesting that we actually uh come back to the library item and uh finish the board of health item.
Okay, so we're closing out the library. Uh, going for, well, we're here lower only and we will go on to recess to convene this board of paths. Time certain eleven, call the water, we'll call and we'll be comments given by Dr. Robin Titus, Lyon County Health Officer.
Hello, everybody. Hopefully you can hear me. I apologize for uh not being on schedule. Um, my my days are pretty busy and getting busier, so I'll call this meeting to order. And I believe we have to take roll call and are all members present? I don't know if the sheriff is there.
Sitting next to me. Yep, he's here.
All right, very good. I have a long view of that back there. So very, very much appreciate that. I'll go go ahead and turn it over to to Shayla right now on further agenda items. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if you could uh read the agenda item into the record, please, the first one.
Well, actually, I don't, uh, I was never sent an agenda, so I'm not looking at an agenda.
I'll go ahead and read the first one for you. Number twenty-two, public participation. We'll actually take any item until it's properly agendaized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time. They'll maybe return to it anytime during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and we limited three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item, but before the board takes any action. Do we have any public comment in the room? Saying none, do we have any online? Okay, we're going to close public participation. Number twenty-three, regular agenda, twenty-three A for possible action, a presentation of mosquito and vector control coverage in Lyon County, including including covered areas, cost and revenue structures presented by Josh Foley, Tom Fowler.
So before, hopefully you can hear me okay, uh, but maybe before Joff, Joff starts, I asked to have this put on the agenda. Uh, I appreciate Chair um Keller and the to the patience with me not having the agenda, but I I requested this because I've had multiple people reach out to me in Smith Valley uh about the mosquito issue. Um, over the many, many years that I've been your um health officer, people, we have asked to have this on a ballot initiative in the past. People have voted it down. And I've told folks that we will address it again, but we need to have public support, not just public complaint. So thank you, Josh, for being there.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Controller of the Record. Thank you, Senator Titus. Yeah, so I dusted off uh some of the information from last time this came around. However, Bedstentsen is still putting together estimates on what it would actually cost to provide that coverage in Smith Valley. And we also would have to narrow down which parcels that that would actually cover. I I used this illustration for the the paper that I put together as backup. I use the Smith Valley Fire Protection District, but that may not be feasible because um, it's, it covers more than just the valley of Smith Valley and some of the parcel owners may not want it in some of the other areas of that fire district, fire protection district. However, uh, just to give you a comparison, because the way the agenda item is worded, we have currently three different areas that are covered by mosquito control or vector control. Vector is a little more comprehensive than mosquito control. Uh, it includes black flies and those type of things. Mosquito control, what you see is what you get, although I wouldn't be surprised if uh some of those treatments take care of the black flies as well. But with that being said, we have Central Lyon County Vector Control District covers the entire central area of Lyon County from Mound House through Silver Springs, excludes Silver City, however. And that has a tax rate for those properties within it of four and a half cents. The assessed valuations approximately one point four billion dollars with a B. And they spend about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars approximately per year to provide that that service. Thank you. I hate to drink in public, but I'm going to take one here. Then we have the Mason Valley mosquito uh mosquito control district. It covers the majority of Mason Valley, but it doesn't go all the way down to Flying Y M or the State Park. It's just the the Mason Valley proper area. It also covers the city of Beerington. So you've got most of the valley here covered. You have a tax rate of eight point three eight cents. The assessed valuation is about three hundred and eighty million dollars. They also, in addition to property tax, they generate consolidated tax revenue. So between the two, you have almost three hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of revenue that they receive. And they spend about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year in expenditures. That includes salary and benefits uh for a full-time manager who we just saw today has thirty-six years with the county and then a seasonal uh assistant for that. And then all of the the things to do at the chemicals and those type of things. Central Lion Vector that I mentioned before is a little bit different. We don't have any employees up there. We just go out for a bid with a contractor and the contractor takes care of it. We receive complaints through the county manager's office, through the commissioners, through everyone who will listen, and they try and get that to the contractor and make sure it gets taken care of. City of Fernley is uh one of the other areas that takes care of it. They take care of their own and so they don't have a separate district for it. Smith Valley is not covered by a district uh or has any mosquito or vector control for currently. The assessed value, assessed value of Smith Valley area, the Smith Valley Fire Protection District is approximately a hundred and fifty-three million. You can see it's half of what Mason Valley has and I'm not even going to do the math, but a lot less than what Central Lion has as far as assessed valuation. There is an available tax rate of fourteen point eight three cents currently, however, with the existing taxing entities that are taxing there, there's abatements of two hundred and thirteen thousand approximately. Uh, that's not being collected of the taxes that are being levied there. So adding more taxes doesn't mean you're going to get more money significantly because you you're already abating what's there because their tax bills aren't going to go up more than three percent or eight percent per year. So the only way to actually get actual revenue for them is to have a vote of the people that would levy that tax outside of that three percent, eight percent cap the first year. Again, the dollar amount of revenue that we would actually get for this district in theory would be two hundred and twenty-six thousand, but is probably less because you may have sections of Smith Valley Fire Protection District that wouldn't want to participate in this. It just depends on how how the board chooses to move forward with that. With that being said, uh, the expenditure is still waiting on it. Uh, Bud wasn't able to get those together in the time frame for this meeting. Apparently he's treating for mosquitoes and things right now. But he said he is working on it and will get that back to me so I can provide it in the future date. I do, I'm here to answer any questions. Just this is the financial pieces that I believe were part of the agenda item.
Great. Thank you, Josh. I I have a couple of questions and I'll open up to the rest of the board. So again, I I think that's what I needed to hear and I think the board does too, because ultimately it's not the Board of Health that would decide if we're going to put it to a vote of the people would be the county commissioners that have to decide to put on the ballot. Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
Okay, and they would be asked to vote for an increased tax to take care of a mosquito abatement. And then we would have to know, the board would have to know if they so decide that that's the Board of Commissioners, what would be a reasonable amount to even make it of, to be able to perform any duties. And so that's where we would need what it actually would cost to to provide any services, what the minimum would need to be. Is that correct also?
That is my understanding as well, yes.
Okay, good, great. So I think that's really what I think um I needed to hear and and I'd love, love to hear from what the Board of Commissioners say and it, because it'd be, I don't know if there's a cost to putting something on um, the ballot. And again, this wouldn't be until the next election cycle, I would assume. And but again, that would be up to the board. But I I think again, people, I keep telling folks here in Smith Valley, especially that the, you know, the reality is you can take, you know, we spray ourselves, certainly around our houses and our little farm, my daughter's farm. But folks want expect who have moved here for somebody else to do that. And I keep telling them that it's going to come with a cost if you choose to do that. But if they're willing, um, I, you know, I'd like to hear the the thoughts of the board themselves on whether they'd be willing to put on the ballot. We'd obviously need to do a lot more homework, but we certainly have some time to do that. Um, from a, from your health officer point, there are illnesses that these mosquitoes carry certainly. And I think we need to be aware of that more than just being an annoyance. Um, and so again, I'm, I'd like to hear what the rest of the members of the board have to say.
Commissioner Jacobson? Thank you, Chair Keller. Um, Mr. Foy, are the residents of Smith Valley currently taxed on the service and not receiving benefits?
They are not being taxed for the service or receiving those benefits.
So if it's on the ballot, it would be only for the Smith Valley residents?
So, yes. To accomplish that, the board would have to create another special district such as we have a district, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District. Otherwise, the county commissioners have to tax countywide and we have no ability to increase that.
Oh, that would never pass.
Yes.
I mean, right?
Even if we're available, that that would be a challenge, yes.
So the, really, the only way that this would pass is if the Smith Valley residents had a Smith uh mosquito abatement district of their own, put on the ballot and they vote whether they want that increased three or whatever percent tax to receive that benefit.
Correct.
So I guess my line of thinking was that would need to go to the Smith Valley um advisory board first for guidance, would it not? Is that the first step or is what 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 are you recommending? Steps be if if they're asking for this, what? What would it be? And and Senator Titus, if you, if you've got insight on that as well, you, I would welcome that or or Mr. Hockaday. Commissioner Hockaday.
I am more than happy to speak on behalf of killing mosquitoes uh because I uh, I am constantly approached as to why we are not getting mosquitoes sprayed. And I mentioned that it has been before the voters in Smith Valley and they voted it down. Um, we are getting a lot more participation in the discussion. In fact, it was kind of a general discussion, uh, public comment at the last advisory board. Of course, everybody in there said, yeah, we'll pay more money. And I said, well, great. Let's just work on it, getting it on the ballot. It hasn't worked before. It hasn't passed before, but if you want to try it again, I'm for it. I'll certainly push it out there and if they vote, voted in, then that's, that's their decision. I totally agree with Dr. Titus. It's something that we need to consider because of the Niles virus and all the other things that are occurring uh that have come up probably before the last vote was uh occurred.
I have a question now. One is, does it cost more because of the agriculture and people opting out for certain areas? They don't want crops or anything sprayed? Uh, Mason Valley would probably be a comparative.
Right. I would have to ask, uh, Bedstens won't be the expert in that. I can put the numbers together of of what the revenues can be and compare them to the expenditures, but he's going to be the expert on what that costs.
And can this, can you put a vote to the public on this in the primary or does it have to be in the general election? The reason why I'm asking is during the primary and the hot season, when the mosquitoes are out, they probably would vote for it. And when it's all cool and they're thinking about saving money, they're probably going to vote against taxes. So I just, yeah.
That would be a district attorney question. That would be a district attorney question. I do not know that, so off the top of my head.
I just have to, I have to compliment you there, uh, Chair Keller, on that observation, because I think that's. That's a perfect uh question to be asked a- and really important too to get support of this, because they always say they want it, but then. When we have put it on the ballot, they vote it down. And I and I think the big question is, I, an additional question to that. Um, is the, is it, can we only go up to the three percent? But I think I thought if it was a ballot question, you could actually go beyond that, depending on what we would need.
That I can't answer. This is Josh Fuller, Lion County County Controller for the record. So. The three percent, eight percent cap just caps the amount that the tax bill of an individual parcel can go up from one year to the next. That can be by a vote of the people. Uh, taken out of place for the year that you put that tax in inception by, it has to be on the ballots. I don't know which election seat can. Find that out for you. Um, that has, that can go on there. However, the other tax cap that's in the N N R S. Where we can't go more than three dollars and sixty-six cents per. Uh, per hundred of assessed valuation as far as total tax rate on a parcel. That cannot be overridden by vote of the people. It would have to be changed by the legislature. So that's where we have a total available rate currently of fourteen point eight three cents. Uh, that will give you a theoretical revenue, assuming there is no three percent slash eight percent tax cap.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions by the board members?
This is Cassinelli for the record. I have one. Question, uh, clarification. Uh, is any mosquito control? Done at at any. Uh, point by the Conservation District?
It's it's my belief they do not do. I mean, the. The Conservation District is engaged in maybe their own individual lots or for other. Um, vector or other issues, but I don't believe that they deal with mosquitoes at all, but it's a it's a good question that we should find out and answer to.
All right. Dr. Titus, I can answer that. Uh, being in the Conservation District for Mason Valley and Smith Valley, it is not. Covered. We don't spray. Um, it has been brought up. In the past is uh possibly doing that type of a project. And that um. They would have more work for their employees. And the basically the off-season when they're spraying for uh noxious weeds. They could also be spraying for mosquitoes, different equipment, different spray. Uh, I think it was brought up once that they could do the same thing at the same time, spray for weeds, spray for for mosquitoes. No, they can't. But uh, it has been brought up as a possible service. From the Conservation District. We can look into that also.
Commissioner Hockaday, did they, the, they would certainly need additional funding. I. I know their budget, uh, because that comes from the state, and I'm just wondering if they. Would then have to request additional budget from the county or would they have to address it from the state?
They would need additional money, and I'm pretty sure that would have to come from. The voters then, because we'd be looking at increasing. Their services. And supplies. I'm I'm sure it would. Once we decided in Smith Valley to increase. The taxes on ourself. Then. We would have to find someone to do the service. And if Conservation District could do that, that'd be great. Otherwise, we would be looking at. Like Mason Valley. And or anybody else is doing it in the county.
Right. Any other questions?
Yeah, I I would be agreeable to to this. I think it would be good to have the exact amount of tax it's gonna be. And all of the details of the information, bring it before the Advisory Board, but I also agree that. If possible, getting it on the ballot in the primary is crucial. If that can be done.
I'm thinking back on Commissioner Hendricks' chair, um. Not that it's a huge deal, but how would that look on the ballot? Would that? Be coming from the Board of Commissioners? Would that be coming from the residents of Smith Valley? How does how does that look as far as? In that, uh, we get in the. Your sample ballot, you get this. Information about the people and or the topics that you're voting on. Would that be coming for, would that be in there as noted as? Coming from the citizens of Smith Valley?
So I don't know that it actually specifies where it comes from. I think there are two. Two pieces under statute that you've can, two ways under statute that you can do. You can have a petition from. The residents and a significant number of people sign that petition. Uh, to the Board of County Commissioners to move forward. Or it can be initiated by the Board of County Commissioners to put that information together and. And do that, which is what happened in the past. The Board of County Commissioners put it together. But when it appears on the ballot, it's just the voters, it was just the voters wanted, wanna do X, Y, and Z.
Right, but in that little write-up, it would be either they'd have to be by petition or by vote of the county commission.
Uh, yes, either I think you're gonna require a vote of the county commission, even a petition to.
Commissioner Keller? Yeah, I. I would also say that uh the Clerk Treasurer should, you know, maybe come in and address this, to figure out exactly. What the details would be and maybe an agenda item. Or she could come in and, you know, fairly quickly in the next uh meeting or two. And discuss how that would work. On the ballot.
We also have to have that taxing district. Decided.
Yes, so in my mind, that's it's a. Multiple. Wrong question. One is, do you want a district? Two is, do you want? Uh, this is what the tax rate of that district would be, and do you want it to be exempt for the tax? To be exempt from the uh three percent, eight percent cap the first year.
So this board, could this board form the district? Without a vote of the public, even though it's not funded?
The answer is yes. The problem is, is the this board cannot authorize it to be outside of the tax cap, the three percent, eight percent cap. Tax cap. So you could literally have the Board of County Commissioners form this district, take the maximum tax rate that's available. And get five hundred dollars worth of revenue the first year because. All the taxes, uh, there's no ability to increase the taxes from your year with the way the tax cap is. So prior to. When the legislature put that into place in two thousand. Was it five? I can't remember for sure, but it seems like it was about two thousand and five. Prior to that, the district could have. Been formed by the Board of County Commissioners, put a tax rate in, and you're done and happy and off you go. Challenge is you're not gonna get any revenue if you do that. Without a vote of the people.
So it it wouldn't speed up the process by. Drawing the district and then. Go to the people.
I'm not sure the district could be formed without being financially viable. The taxation has to review that.
Oh, I just want.
Look back if I made my comments. It just seems like. If they do it by petition, it probably have a better chance of passing, in my opinion, than just. The Board of County Commissioners trying to raise our taxes, government stepping in. So I would. I guess I would make sure that the. Smith Valley Cam or Advisory Board. Considers that as well, because a lot of people are gonna vote no, just because it, oh, it's here, look at us, the Board of County Commissioners are trying to raise our taxes.
Well, I I if I might just jump in, I I would say that um. Part of this education, part of it's obviously education uh program and educating the folks and the taxpayers, raising the. The tax uh for firemen in Central Lion. They did a great job going out and meeting with the. Uh, central committees and different groups and educating them on the importance of 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 of. The the particular tax that they were doing to keep some firemen. I think this would be no different. I I agree that people need to be educated, but I don't. I don't feel that the county commissioners would own, oh, they're increasing our taxes, because that's exactly why I. I think most of you would know that I'm a pretty tax conservative person, but when you put it to a vote of the people. Whole different ballgame. Um, but again, the success would be to try to educate them from a health district component. On the importance of doing this, whether or not um people want to do it. That's that's fine. But again, it's that argument that I've said to folks, listen, I've brought this up before as your health officer, and you've voted not to support it. And I think. For me, um, it it's. There's more people in the Smith Valley area, um, and I I like the idea of having something in July or in in June, if we could on the primary. And also, um, one of the reasons that I asked it being brought up today is all the discussions very appropriate. All of you have had wonderful questions. About process and how do we get this done? And of course, we have to include our clerk. And as you can see, this is no easy task. This is something that is complicated. It has to ha- be vetted by, you know, legal. It has to be vetted by the tax department, all of these things, but it's not. Insurmountable and getting it on the ballot again, and whatever wording that we could do that makes sense. If it's fiscally even responsible, and I think that we have to ask that question too. If we even put it on the ballot, can we raise enough money to even support a mosquito district here in this valley? And that's where. Um, the ma- the the Mason Valley folks could let us know what their budget is. So all these questions are just fantastic. Um, and it obviously needs to be uh thought. Thought through and obviously re-agendized. Um, but the the discussion's been fantastic, so I appreciate everybody's engagement.
And we have another question now. When we do a petition, uh, it seems like when people sign up, they take a little bit of ownership and they don't usually change their mind when it comes time to vote because they've. Already committed to something. But I wanted to know, is there a certain time that we have to turn in petitions? Is that during the? When's the deadline for that? Because. That's probably not when the mosquitoes are out.
That would be a question for Stacy. I don't know the answer to that one.
I think it's before the start of the primary.
Commissioner Keller, one, one of the things that I would mention is that uh. If there's any. Bush, as we see the rules for um some mosquito abatement, I would say. This Civilian Advisory Board, I'll make sure that gets on the agenda that that we get the word out, but we also have the uh, you know. Smith Valley Fund Days, which we could probably have a booth. And uh. Sit down and say, this is what we're looking at. This is why we're looking at it and get the information out to people that are coming to the fund days because it is a big event. And get some feedback. But I'm quite sure if it's a civilian United Value Board, that we will have a lot of people showing up and. Stating their support or lack thereof. So from Congress moving on as quick as possible.
You're asking. Just want to touch. But on the difference between what um Cent- Central Lion Fire did and what this could potentially do. Um. So Central Lion Fire was it was an existing organization that had staff and they they went out and provided some public education. This is. A district that's not created, that doesn't have staff. Um, and I'm not sure that we can legally use county funds to. Um, actually go out and do that education. Uh, that would be a a question for the District Attorney's Office, but. Um, I'm not sure that that we can go. Go do that on on that district's behalf.
Uh, Cassinelli online here, if I can ask a question, not to drag this out any longer, but. Um, wouldn't it save us a little? Uh, reinventing the wheel if if we could just have the Smith Valley. Community vote and then annexed to be annexed into the existing Mason Valley Control District?
Josh Fuller, Lion County Controller for the record. We've looked into that in the past. Um, thought that would be a a great option. The challenge is, is with that tax rate. The last time we looked at this, it was a few hundred thousand dollars to cover Smith Valley and Mason Valley only uses eight point three eight cents a tax rate. And it just didn't generate even close enough money to treat what Smith Valley would need. So that would be. A challenge. In addition to that, the annexation would require all the voters of Mason Valley to agree to that as well. So. Uh, one thing that we possibly could do is uh. Is contract for the expertise of the Mason Valley Mosquito District. And do a contract, but it would need to be a separate district, raising enough funds to actually take care of. Of that. So unfortunately, the math didn't pencil out when we looked at that.
Yeah, thank you.
Doctor Titus?
Yes, I was gonna say, if there's no further questions or comments, I would like to see um. Maybe some uh more information, get that information of what it costs on Mason Valley and then. Put it back on our next uh meeting. Uh, and in the meantime, we could be uh garnishing or gathering uh the information that's required from the D A, from our clerk. On just, well, on this process. And then have it re-agendized on the next Board of Health, and certainly the the Board of County Commissioners. Can move forward on some of these questions also, uh, outside the the Board of Health um. Meeting. And then and then maybe, maybe if Commissioner Hockaday is at the next Smith Valley Advisory. Um, meeting, bring that up and just get a feel for for that community. And if no other comments on that, uh, well, if there's no other comments, we'll move on to um twenty three. Oh, go ahead.
Thanks. So it sounds like it's a grassroots effort because there's no money from the money, we can't use money from the county. And uh. I, the second part slipped, so.
Oh, well, you certainly, there's no require, you know, if the county was flush with funds, they certainly could uh throw some money uh and. And and to the different options and spray for mosquitoes over here, but you know, that's not reasonable. So. Uh, again, um, moving forward, we're going to have to go through. The process of all the questions that I I gathered from today. Number one, what's the true cost of of? Doing a vector slash mosquito control in Smith Valley? What would that cost look like? Is it reasonable? Number two, how would we raise those funds? Are we gonna look at a petition? Or we're gonna look at a ballot initiative and that the county commission has put forward, and I think we'll need. Our our clerk Stacy to to look at and help us with that. And then number three, just implementation and getting community to support. So. Um, I I think all of those are are things that we. Should put out there, have further discussions, have it re-agendized, and then um put back on and perhaps if you, as a Board of County Commissioners. Choose to do so, certainly we could put it back on the next Board of Health meeting. After we have all the information.
Thank you for that, Senator Titus, and and I remember my second part. So, but we could agendize and. Schedule a Bor- a Board of Health meeting at any. Of these meetings.
Absolutely.
It wouldn't have to necessarily be at the next one. It could be whenever we're ready.
Right, there's a lot of information that we have to gather, I think, and a lot of homework to be done.
So with this being an action item, we're not taking any action. Uh, we've given uh. Various staff direction, I think. And so we can move on to twenty-three B if you would like me to read it in.
Right, and Scott, I, uh, Commissioner Chair, I have, uh, I now have a copy of the agenda, so thank you for that. Thanks for your patience too. Um, anyway, we'll we'll go on to twenty-three B uh for possible action presentation on upcoming public health infrastructure funds and proposed uses. As well as current outcomes of S B one eighteen, money is used for public health marketing campaign. And Shayla, I believe you are. At the dice.
That that is me. Thank you so much. Uh, Shayla Holmes, Director of Lion County Human Services. I just wanted to provide an update. I really wanted to get Amy Heinz-Sutherland from Nevada Naco here to do this, but she was on vacation. So I. Um, combined it so you guys can see uh some update on some key performance indicators for. The S B one eighteen monies where we created Live Better Lion and have started doing some public messaging campaign around public health. This, if you think back to just a few minutes ago when I did a strategic plan presentation, the community is unaware of our services. They're unaware of what's available to them. And we've been hearing this time and time again. So with S B one eighteen potentially, so that was two legislative sessions ago. Potentially being a fiscal cliff, not having ongoing funds. We didn't want to create new programming, but we did want it to be meaningful. And so we wanted to take that opportunity to educate our community on what we have. We have gotten astounding feedback on Live Better Lion. It has been well received within the community. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback. On the messaging that's been out there. We contracted with Hey Frank. And they've been pushing out based on data. We provided them three topics. So the first one they did was uh sexually transmitted infection. Uh, but actually, the first step, let me take a step back, was to create Live Better Lion. Get Live Better Lion out there as an umbrella campaign that could live on for perpetuity. So. So we can keep Live Better Lion going with or without funds. We own the website. We could put whatever topics, information, um, things we want on there. I'll show you guys that on the next slide. But this one is some of the social media campaign that started. So first we did Live Better Lion, then it rolled out with sexually transmitted infections because our data showed that we have significantly higher rates of that per capita in comparison to some of our other, uh, counties within the state. The next one that's getting ready to launch is a safe driving campaign because I think that you guys are well aware of, there's some issues on our roads in regards to mortality. And then the third campaign that's going to launch is behavioral health and some overall mental health messaging. Along those lines, we were also able to put a little additional grant funding from our youth m- mental health crisis team towards Live Better Lion as well. So you have also been seeing along the same lines of those other three, some youth specific information going out. So depending on where you get your information, they're doing social media. We've got the website. They've also done video stuff. Like if you stream live, you can see some Live Better Lion commercials. And they've also been doing radio campaigns, which is really cool. So on the previous slide, so sorry Martha, I'm just all over the place. Um, I don't speak marketing, but I trust our marketing folks who live in this world. When they tell me that a point zero eight percent click through rate is the benchmark. And that means that we're getting a lot of engagement with our, our media campaigns online. And we exceeded that. I think it's, um, at point one eight. So we're doing great on the social media, um, that, and that CTR is a click through rate. Uh, they also provided, so on, on the visual component of it, we're in the hot, like ninety nine percent of folks watch the whole ad. And why is that? Because if you have an ad on your streaming service, you can't fast forward through it. So they're a captive audience. They're stuck watching the whole thing unless they turn off their TV. Um, and then the audio, uh, the radio ads have also been getting a really high listen through rate, which is in the eighty percent. So the folks that are hearing our messages are engaging with them. They're listening to them. And we've been able to reach quite a few folks. On the next side, um, the website, so this was our last meeting with them. We're meeting with them every couple of months where they're providing us updates on these performance indicators. So this was through, uh, mid-April. We had four hundred and seventy seven clicks from social media to our website. And then we've had a lot of engagement with clicking around on the website. So this is a screenshot of what that landing page looks like, where then you can go to the different sections of which we're focusing on. You might notice that there's an immunization up there. So Amy Heinz Sutherland with Nevada Naco was able to bring in immunization specific monies. And we partnered with Nevada Naco and gave them access to Live Better Lion. So they built that out for us at no cost to us. So it provides a lot of information on where folks can go and get their vaccinations, why vaccination is important. And they can explore all of those, uh, topics within that page right on our Live Better Lion campaign. So it's been really amazing to have this as an option because as other partners are wanting to push out information, we have a platform and a way to do that. The other thing to note is we now have, I want to say two hundred subscribers through the LiveBetterLion.org email. When you go to LiveBetterLion.org, you can scroll all the way down. You can put in your email address and get on that lift serve. So we're getting ready to do our first email blast. So we have a direct way to communicate public health messaging to folks that are interested in, in getting that via the Live Better Lion site. So exciting stuff happening. All of that was made possible through the SB one eighteen monies two legislative sessions ago. Fast forwarding to our most recent legislative session, if you want to head to the next page, thank you. SB four twenty three was, uh, successful in creating an account for public health and ensuring these monies move, continue on forever via legislation. So we will be receiving soon-ish, uh, two hundred and seventy eight thousand and one hundred and twenty seven dollars for the biennium. That's about seven thousand dollars more than what we got for the original SB one eighteen. So it's aligned with what the original funding stream was. And we had to come up with our scope of work for that. And which was pretty tough at the moment because there's a lot of uncertainty, a lot of ambiguity, which I think I've said maybe eight hundred times today so far. So I'm sorry for that. But what is great is that the state was willing to work with us and we were able to provide a scope of work that is to essentially maintain essential services that support community resilience and health outcomes. And what we put in there is all of the programs that have the potential to lose funding. So while this isn't enough money to cover, if we lost a ton of grant money, it is enough to make sure that we don't go backwards within some public health streams. If all of our grants come through and we don't need to put this towards maintaining what we've already built for behavioral health and maintaining what we've already built for public health. Great. We can reassess. It's an interlocal agreement. It's not, uh, grant NOSA. It's really easily amendable. We can go back and we can say this is what we want to build. This is what we want to move forward with. So right now we're having it processed as maintain what we currently have. And then if, if we're able to do that on our own, great. And, and then we can go back and adjust. But exciting that it will be continuous funding and that we'll be able to utilize it to increase the public health infrastructure within Lyon County. With that, um, any questions?
Any questions?
Well, yeah, I was, uh, was just, uh, going to ask that. I, first I want to thank and acknowledge, uh, Shayla's hard work on this and, and the outcomes. We were, as she stated, we were very concerned about when we got this money, how would we spend it? And again, um, she used the, one of my terms that I use a lot is we want, didn't want to fall off that fiscal, uh, fiscal cliff. And so I think it's been successful and, and, uh, um, just wanted to compliment her on that. And then are there any questions?
Not saying.
So Shayla, one more, when, when will we decide, um, when, when, when was that money is potentially available again? I know that it was passed in the, in the bill and I, but I, I didn't hear the date necessarily they'd be allocated.
I believe it's already allocated. Our interlocal is, I do believe we made it in time to be slated for the September Board of Examiners meeting. Um, if for any reason we didn't make the cutoff for that agenda, then it'll be at the following Board of Examiners meeting, um, to be released.
Right. Any other questions? Very good. Thank you for that. And with that, we'll close twenty three B and we'll go on to twenty three C, uh, for presentation only. Presentation on the twenty twenty five Lyon County Community Context Report.
Thank you so much again, Dr. Titus, Shayla Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services, for the record. As promised, a more in-depth look at our community context report. I realized that this report itself did not make it on as a backup to the agenda. It is available on our website and I did just shoot it out via an email as well. It is a seventy-two page doc, maybe it's bigger than that. Um, it's a big document, so I'm not going to go over every page with you, much like I did not go over the strategic plan page by page. But I just want to highlight some critical, um, information from that. And again, highlight that this context report is here and available for the community, for you all, for us as a department and a county to be able to come back to solid sources of information that is all consolidated about Lyon County, for us to be able to make decisions based off of, um, our demographics and our information and all the, all of those pieces. So the, this report broken up much like the strategic plan into sections. Overview of Lyon County is pages seven through twenty-one. Uh, a brief geographic and demographic overview. I think I'm, uh, preaching to the choir when, showing you an image of Lyon County. But what I really want to highlight on here is the census tracts. So in this community context report, we were able to pull information by census track and really get granular with where, which demographics and which populations needs are. So we could try to be more informed and targeted in our approaches based off which community we're working within. On the next slide, you'll see the big picture. We talked a bit in the strategic planning presentation about our age makeup. But here you see we've got fifty-seven point nine percent adults aged eighteen to sixty-four. That little box to the side breaks down that eighteen to sixty-four into other chunks. You see that we've got twenty-one point two percent of individuals aged over the sixty-five. And then we've got twenty point nine percent of individuals under the age of eighteen. Our race and ethnicity breakdown is important because a lot of times this is critical for us to, how we end up having to engage with a lot of our grant funding, what languages things have to be in. If you guys look back at our strategic planning report and our objectives, it says during our outreach that it'll be in English and in Spanish. Or actually it says English and other identified languages based off of our, our data. Because that, that is a big requirement for us to have that available in the languages of which our community speaks. Um, the other thing to note that's not on here is the ethnicity component. We do have, um, about eighteen percent of our population, I actually think it's more like nineteen percent identifies as Hispanic. On the next slide, you'll see our total households. And it's important to note the difference between households and families. Households could be individuals that are doubled up. So if you have adults that are unmarried without children of their own, they fall into the household category. Families are family units where you have folks that have completed the census saying married with children, things of that nature. So that's how you can kind of identify that separately. So total households, we've got twenty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety with an average household size of two point five. But the average family size is three. You can forget that point oh six. I always kind of giggle at the third of a human that's somewhere. But you know, the way the data works and it all breaks down. So our projected population, I think, is really important to consider as well. So in twenty twenty-five, they anticipate us being up to sixty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-five. That looks a little different than if you were to go to the census right now and see what that number is. I think that's closer to the six thousands. And then it's projected out into twenty forty. If all things go as our current trend line does, of course, things can change. They anticipate us having seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five folks living in Lyon County by twenty forty. Still keeps us under that hundred thousand, that magical number with an NRS for quite some time. But it's important to note that we get close. On the next page, you'll see some educational attainment and employment information, not the next page of the actual report, but on the next page of this presentation. Um, this is important information when it comes to how we start planning, programming and trying to partner with our school districts and trying to partner with our secondary education partners on what we're able to bring into the county to help our workforce. That's really what education does, right? It's the pipeline for our workforce development. So we've got twelve point seven percent of folks over the age of twenty-five who have not completed a high school diploma or a GED. Um, we've got thirty-one point nine percent that do have a higher than, or that have a high school diploma. Then we've got twenty-eight point one that's got some college, sixteen point one who have an associate's, and then eleven point two that have a bachelor's degree or higher. And then I think a really positive thing to highlight is that our unemployment rate continues to go down. That's not necessarily that people are working, but that they're no longer collecting unemployment, right? So there's a gap in data there as far as are they a part of the workforce or are they just not collecting unemployment? But that number has continued to go down. Over the last five years, we went from seven point four percent to six point three. The next component that's really important to my department specifically is the income and the poverty levels. The median income for all households within Lyon County is seventy thousand. The median income for families is eighty-four thousand and the median household income is forty-five thousand. So when you think about the households versus the families, right? So you could have two people living together that are not considered a family. So their income is counted individually there. We're at currently a rate of poverty of eleven percent. Um, but the folks living under the age of eighteen, there's more of them within a household than typically the provider. That has a higher rate at fifteen percent, which is important to think about when we're talking about free and reduced lunches and services that we're providing to our youths in our schools and our communities. The next component, which we talked about, which is housing. What's important to know about fair market rents is that this is what grant funding is based off of. This is the amount that we're allowed to aid people up to. We can't provide via grant funding support for rent that's higher than fair market rent value. So if you look at some of these from, um, twenty twenty-four, you can see that a two-bedroom for nine hundred and twelve dollars isn't exactly realistic. You go out into Lyon County and try to rent a two-bedroom apartment, odds of you finding one for nine hundred and twelve dollars is, I mean, if you find one, please let me know. Uh, not that I'm looking personally, but it would be amazing to find it and offer it to, to individuals. And if it has any vacancies, the, the next component, right? Um, we do have a really high homeownership rate. You guys heard from Nevada Housing Division earlier this morning about how many folks they've been able to help become homeowners. This is really important. Seventy-six per four point four percent, um, of housing units are owner occupied, which is great. Twenty-three point six are rental properties. But the other component to keep in mind, which is something we, I think, continue to actively work on as a county as a whole, is that eighteen point eight percent of all units are mobile homes, which is tough in regards to resale and what that looks like as far as building wealth and, and future growth of the community. Um, next page shows some additional housing information. This is the point in time count, um, as far as homelessness goes. Twenty twenty-four showed a higher number than what we've seen in many years at a hundred and twelve. Um, we chose not to do a point in time count in twenty twenty-five in alignment with the rest of the state. So we're anxious to see what twenty twenty-six looks like. As Commissioner Keller mentioned earlier, these, uh, has a lot to do with, uh, homeless populations migrating in and out. And it also has to do with how well we do the count and what that looks like in previous years. When we have more search teams, we find more people. So, um, it's really not the best tracker as far as what the true homeless population looks like or trend line, um, is, but it's what we've got. The next page shows, uh, individuals living with disabilities. And we've got adults and children separate. Approximately sixteen point six percent of Lyon County residents are living with a disability. And it's important to note that nine one point one percent of adults over the age of sixty-five are living with Alzheimer's. This really changes the service delivery and programming that we need to have in place and how we continue to plan. As more individuals are moving into that sixty-five and older bracket, what does that do to that number and services available for folks that are living with a, um, Alzheimer's type disease? The final slide that we've got over this general demographics, and again, so much more information in the actual context reports and really good synthesis and something, additional components to consider, uh, but substance misuse and mental health. So this graph shows a pretty solid line for a while. A dip in twenty twenty-one, is that because of COVID? We don't know. Um, and then you see a big jump from twenty-two to twenty-three as far as a twenty point nine percent annual increase for individuals that have a substance-related dependence. So these are folks that have come in, or actually these are folks, I believe, that have completed the behavioral health surveys available through doctors' offices as they come in and get screened. So it's not the full population within the survey being, um, snapshotted, but it is what we have in order to, um, identify what our population needs look like as far as that goes. So moving into some of the more interesting components as far as the variations across the county. So this is the first year that we delved into those census tracts and started looking at each of our communities' unique, uh, needs and how we can try to plan for that in the future. So we did this in four regions, uh, firmly Silver Springs, Dayton, and then Yarrington, Smith Valley. And you can see the darker blue or the higher percentages of those different sections. So minors under the age of seventeen were higher in firmly. And then in Dayton and then Yarrington and then Silver Springs having the least. But then, um, Silver Springs has the highest amount of individuals living with disabilities. So when we start talking about trying to be smart with our programming, smart with our dollars, how can we make sure that we're getting the right stuff in the right places? This type of information is really helpful. So just a quick snapshot for each of the communities broken down on the next slide. We've got Yarrington, Smith Valley, that nine point oh one is that census tract that we were looking at. And for these ones, we see that we've got ha- um, a higher rate of individuals aged sixty-five and older, higher rate of single parent households, higher rate of poverty below a hundred and fifty percent, and a twelve point nine percent, um, which is higher than the rest of the county on no health insurance. So if you'll go to the next slide, you can kind of see this visually what that looks like. And then the next slide, so that one shows the seniors, this one shows the poverty. So really looking at that eastern part of the county as far as what we can do to start working on workforce development. eastern part of the county as far as what we can do to start working on workforce development, increasing income, things of that nature. The next slide, we're gonna look at nine point oh two, which is Yarrington and Smith Valley still, but a separate census tract, higher rate of youth, still high single-parent households, still high poverty, and then a higher percent of individuals unemployed. So our unemployment rate is six point three. Of that six point three eighteen or sixteen point two percent of them are living within this census tract. So then you just see that visually uh across the county map on the next slide. And you see that that's higher in that middle section. And then the next one we're gonna look at is Dayton, which is census tract three point oh one. Um, here we've got uh speaks English less than well is a higher issue within Dayton. We've got non-white or Hispanic households there. We've got a high rate of single-parent households there as well. We also have a high rate of no high school diploma and living in a mobile home. So on the next slide, you'll see visually what that looks like. That's the high school diploma piece. So you can see the majority of our county is doing pretty good as far as educational attainment, and then those little tracks and mainly the Dayton region having the higher amount. And then on the next slide, we've got Silver Springs two point oh four. Here we've got a extremely high rate of mobile homes, and we have a really high rate of individuals living with a disability. And then the next two slides show what that looks like visually uh within the county as well. So the next component that's available within the report is an overview of our service recipients and our programs. So this is where SCI, Social Entrepreneurs Incorporated, the contractor we utilized for this report and our strategic plan was able to utilize our existing in-house data to give us a good snapshot as far as what um what we provide and compare that to what our actual population is. So you can see that two point seven percent of our recipients are under the age of eighteen. That makes sense, because typically we're not providing services directly to the youth, we're providing them to the parent. Uh seventy point two percent are adults between eighteen and sixty-four, and twenty-seven point fi- uh one are to seniors over the age of sixty-five, which is a pretty good alignment with what our population is. So we seem to be providing services to all the right people, so to speak, based on age. Um, adult services, and, and this is using FY twenty-three to twenty-four. Um, nine hundred and sixty-four folks from adult services were served in that year, six hundred and twenty-nine were senior services, four hundred and fifteen were within the children's services division, so it would be captured as an adult receiving services, but they were receiving services for their youth. Uh, behavioral health launched at the end of twenty-two, so to consider twenty-three, twenty-four being its first year in our department, it served three hundred and twenty-eight people. Uh, and then I can't exclude the public guardianship as much as I try to. Uh, we had twenty folks under our care in twenty-three and twenty-four. That number has continued to rise since I was appointed the public guardian several years ago. Um, when I first started, we had twelve, and now we have twenty. We've been as high as twenty-two. Um, so the summary of community needs survey, so this is that eligible, not eligible recipients not receiving services on thirty-five to thirty-nine, um and how they ranked. So we had a hundred and thirty-eight seniors, a hundred and forty-eight families with children, and ninety-eight folks with uh individuals with disabilities or providing care to those with uh disabilities, and how they ranked what services they need. Seeing basic services as number one, so basic financial support, basic food, like what does it take for me to just survive as a human? And then moving down, healthcare for seniors being number two. That for individuals with disabilities, that's number four, and that didn't even rank with families and children in the top four. Again, within the actual report, you can really dig into a lot of this information to support anything that you're working on or um for us as a department to be able to tailor our, our service variety. Uh, the community engagement survey, uh, this is one of the focus groups that um Commissioner Hockaday mentioned he attended. Um, we did a survey with them, and then we also had the groups. They were not well-attended. So hopefully, when we do this again in five years, we can figure out a better way to get better attendance. But that's not to say that the information shared in those groups wasn't valuable. So there were some snippets or some quotes from folks at those focus groups really around, they did, they had no clue about LCHS services. It takes a lot of courage to ask for help, and I didn't even know who to contact. So really getting this information out to the public, what is available, and then how do we do that in a way with compassion and dignity and respect, so that way they feel comfortable when they're coming in. So some key data trends from the entire report, again, um a little duplication from the presentation earlier, but our population growth of seniors is growing. Children and families have spe- uh, uh special needs within our community, and we need to understand the profile of LCHS service recipients to better aid in what we do. Some community needs and potential service gaps, housing and homelessness, regions with heightened vulnerability, there's four census tracts that we really identified was Yarrington nine point oh one, three point oh one for Mount House slash Silver City as being highly vulnerable due to their lack of access. Uh, mental health access and health access across the board are concerns and things we need to be working on as well as service awareness and barriers to access that aren't just physical. Again, a lot of appendices here is page forty-seven to sixty-eight. You can see all of that nitty-gritty detail in that report as far as where it was all pulled for from. Um, I think I mentioned at some point in time, a lot of this data is no longer available because of changes that the federal government thinks going down, going up, shifting where they're at. So we did use the social vulnerability index to figure out those census tracts and figure out that information. That data I do not believe is online right now, but it is available in the appendices, so you can see where it was pulled from and how it was synthesized and used. With that, I'm open to any questions.
Well, first again, Shayla, thank you so much for that. Hopefully, uh, folks will have a little bit better time to read it and uh dig deep into it. I appreciate all that, and um with that, uh, any commissioners or board members questions?
I do have one question. Commissioner Keller, um there's a lot of, a lot of that uh data said living in mobile homes. And is there a definition of mobile homes? Because mobile homes were pre-HUD. We changed it into manufactured home. Are you talking motorhomes? Or, or pretty HUD and mobile?
I'm trying to find in our actual document where we define that. Um, County Manager Haskin was a part of that conversation, so I think he's I think it was both, yeah.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager. So from what I remember, it was, it was both pre and post HUD uh housing. The federal government um has identified uh moving in a mobile home as a
Local one does not require permanent foundation.
Yeah, so they require, they define it as uh movable and does not require a permanent foundation, so um, and we've changed some codes here um to require the permanent foundation and um
So those are, we have that high a percentage on what I'd call soft set uh type of foundation or uh, and they're not supposed to be living in motorhomes, but doesn't mean they're not. So I would just curious.
But yeah, I mean, we have made some changes trying to improve upon that, and um, you know, I know we there was an ordinance proposed a couple of years ago that would have required a full perimeter foundation. Um, we ended up not moving forward, forward with that at the time, but that's always something that we can revisit as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just one, and I will, uh, this is Jacobson, but um Dr. Holmes, it seemed like I asked this a couple of years ago, and just refresh my memory, during the homeless point in time count. If they refused to talk to you, were they, could you use your discretion on that data, or were they not considered not homeless?
So in the actual point-in-time report, it does break that down. So the hundred and twelve are those that are literally homeless, confirmed homeless. And then within that report, there is a section for us to say observed homeless um based off of the counters discretion and what they observed. So that's why in twenty twenty-one, when we weren't actually able to make contact with folks due to COVID regulations, that number is super low, because it was just just observation only, um or individuals whom we had confirmed through service contact.
There was a uh trailer parked under a tree, and when they saw you pull up, they walked into their trailer and shut the door and then come out. You would obviously observe at least one. Thank you for the report.
Any additional questions? I, I'm sorry, did I hear somebody ask a question? Oh, okay, very good. Well, thank you, Shayla, and, and also, um, I, I'm gonna, I'll pull up that full report, but is there, sometimes numbers are just numbers, and it's, it's, I'd like to see the comparison uh maybe on the rest of the state um and with, you know, just a point in time, and are those numbers that you give, like the percent of elderly, is there anywhere in that data uh that compares it to where we were a decade ago, and where do we stand, say, like college education, um, high school graduates, those kind of things? In that report, does it compare us to the rest of the counties or the state in general? Is that there, or is it just one spot of information for Lyon County specific?
The majority of it within the actual full context report does show some trend lines for Lyon County. We don't compare ourselves to the state in the community context report anywhere. Um, actually, there, there might be some anecdotal. So within the housing component, they do show some state numbers um because there was no other comparison to Lyon County numbers. So, and then it also this year was unique in that some of the data wasn't available historically. Uh, they were able to pull data, started analyzing it, and then were able to re-access it. So they went with what we had. So um there is some of that nuance within the community context report. It's not there for every data point, and it is majorly uh comparison to Lyon County and our growth or how well we've done over the years.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? Hearing none, um, we'll move on to, again, thank you, and we'll move on to the final agenda item. Uh, I believe is twenty-three D for possible action, future agenda items, and Board of Health meeting date.
Chair Holmes, for the record, uh, first I want to apologize to the miscommunication to you, Dr. Titus, regarding today's meeting and the agenda. But I do want to make sure that going forward, at least for the next one, um, we've got a, a solid date when we leave today, if at all possible. We should be holding a Board of Health quarterly, as was asked earlier. We can't hold it at any time based on your guys' discretion and what you're requesting, but I should be providing a Board of Health at least quarterly. Uh, due to the legislative session, Senator Titus, your responsibilities make it really hard to meet during that period of time, so we rushed to get this meeting on the books. For the next meeting, I'm proposing September or October, and was hoping if we could identify whether the first or second meeting of September or October would work.
So the second meeting of October would be?
The sixteenth.
Sixteenth, let's see. Um, I'm, I have a IFC meeting now. Let, what, what would be the first one in, as September?
Our first one in September is the fourth.
So I could do that, uh, providing everyone is patient with me and allow me to zoom on that one?
Alrighty, so I'll work with you to get a time, and we'll figure that out. Um, and I guess you guys would have to vote on whether September fourth is the next meeting date. I don't know if this is possible action. Um, and on that note, also some agenda items that I'm attempting to bring out on the next Board of Health. I was trying to get it for this meeting, but the state uh was unavailable, understandable. They've been, I want to get the state's newly created Nevada Health Authority out to present on what that new restructure looks like. They've been in formation for seventeen days, so I can give them a little bit of grace that they weren't prepared to do that right now. But hopefully by September, we can get a representative out to share how DHHS is now a health authority and then a human services. I'm also hoping to provide an overview of the federal legislative changes regarding to Medicaid and some other possible impacts. I'm also uh hoping at some point in time to bring out managed care organizations that is coming to rural Nevada in twenty twenty-six, and there's two of them, which is Silver Summit and Care Source. And then also based on today's meeting, perhaps something about the vector control districts, if you guys feel you're, you're needing that at that point in time. And of course, agenda items can be requested at any point in time, but um I just wanted to provide that information today to give a, a scope of what we are looking at.
So is there any other suggestions from the rest of the members of the board?
I do want to know if uh what your timeframe is to, as far as time of day.
Well, this uh for the September fourth?
Yeah, if you have like nine till eleven, is there?
If, if possible, um, the eleven is, is a good time. On September fourth.
Shouldn't it be that? With your motion, uh, could I make a motion?
Please do.
A motion that on September fourth, eleven o'clock AM time certain, we have a Board of Health a, agenda item. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed? With that, the motion carries. Thank you, Shayla, for those suggestions, and thank you for uh fellow members. Any additional comment, uh Shayla, before we go to the final item, uh, which is public participation?
Nothing for me, Dr. Titus.
All right, very good. Well, thank you, everybody, and we'll uh go to item, uh, actually adjourn. Uh, I'm sorry, we'll just do public participation. Is there anybody in the room?
No.
Anybody online?
No.
And with that, thank you all, old adjourned, and um it's, it's back to you, Chair um Keller.
Thank you, Dr. Titus. Royal, we can do, as Lyon County Board of Commissioners. Coming back to number seventeen, board appointments. It's already been read into, I have to read it in again.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Hang on a second, uh, Commissioner Holmes.
Yes, um, I'm, I'm on, I'm ready to go.
Go ahead, and I will uh take myself off the board.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Win Prindl, Director of the Lyon County Library System. I'm here just to give you a brief summary of what happened at the last Library Board of Trustees meeting. Um, on June thirty, two seats um of the Lyon County Library Board of Trustees became vacant. According to the county administrative policies and procedures, the Library Board of Trustees may make a recommendation to the BOCC. Once recommendation has been made by the Library Board of Trustees, the application or applications and recommendations will be forwarded to the BOCC for appointment. According to the bylaws of the Library Board of Trustees, it is preferred that board members reside in the community in which they represent. Occasionally, board members have represented communities other than where they reside. But the preference has always been to have trustees represent the community in which they live. I've attached a copy of the bylaws in this um item. At the June twenty-fourth Library Board meeting, six applicants for trustee were interviewed. In keeping with the desire to choose trustees to represent their own communities, Sarah Jorgensen, Sarah Ross, and Deanne Davis were interviewed for the Dayton area position. While Kay Edwards, Vita Keller, and Eric Nelson were interviewed for the Silver Springs area position. Copies of all of their applications are attached. Trustees Shar and Palmer alternated in asking each applicant the same set of questions. Copy of those questions are attached. After deliberation, the Lyon County Library Board of Trustees recommends the appointment of Sarah Ross to represent the area, the Dayton area by vote of three to one. Deanne Davis abstained from voting. The Lyon County Library Board of Trustees could not agree on a recommendation for the Silver Springs area. Kay Edwards and Vita Keller each received separate votes. Both votes ended in a two-to-two result. Kay Edwards abstained from voting on both votes. Eric Nelson did not receive any consideration. The draft minutes of the June twenty-fourth Library Board meeting are attached for your information, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, I think first, I'd like for us to hear from any of the applicants that are present and would like to speak. So is Sarah Ross in the room? I'm gonna write, go right down the list as they're on our agenda. So Sarah Ross is not present? Oh, there she is, okay.
Just had to make my way from the back.
Okay.
Do I need to sign in?
Yes, please do, and you'll each get three minutes.
Okay, so I wasn't sure whether we were going to be having kind of a question and answer like we did before, or if you just wanted some remarks from me about who I am and why I'm interested in this position. So I guess we'll go with the latter. My name is Sarah Ross. I've been a Lyon County resident for over 23 years. And I have raised children in this county, going to storytime from the time they were tiny, music activities at the library, to participating in summer reading programs throughout their growing up. I have always been interested in community involvement. As you can see from my application, I have volunteered in our community in several different ways. I am from Silver City, and given that we don't have our own public library, the Dayton Valley Public Library is our closest library to participate. And but a lot of my volunteer work has been within the community of Silver City, both in the past and currently, and also within the Dayton community, as my husband and I and our children lived there for about five years. I have, like I said, have always been interested in, in being involved in the community, but raising children for the last 20 years, both my own and others that have been in our home for different periods and seasons of their lives, and working once my kids were in school and pursuing my ba, my bachelor's degree while my kids were in school. Official public service was not in the cards for me. My youngest is now 15, I have my degree, and so this seems like a good season to enter this, this realm. I, I don't have an agenda coming to be a part of the Library Board of Trustees beyond continuing the good work that has been going forward, sustaining and upholding the laws and the requirements and codes that the library is to follow, and creating more opportunities to support all in our community, no matter their ideologies or religions or social status or any other morals or values that they bring to the table. We all deserve to be heard. We all deserve to be seen in our literature. We all deserve the opportunity to receive the services at the public libraries. And I think that the, our Lyon County Public Library system has done a really good job of that, as far as I've been a part of it. And I would like to be able to continue that service moving forward. Currently, I do work for a nonprofit in community outreach. I do have the opportunity to be in all of our Lyon County schools, well, middle schools and high schools several times throughout the year, providing signs of suicide training to both our middle schoolers and our high schoolers. I worked at Carson-Montessori Charter School for eight years, first in the office and then progressed into administration. And I have a love for our children. Like I said, I've had many of, many children in my home throughout the years and recognize that while my experience has not been the same as everyone else's experience, it has made it difficult for me to relate to some of those children that have had very difficult experiences in their lives. But what was helpful was to be able to use our public library system to both educate myself and my husband in the needs of these children and for them to be able to find literature that supported them and recognized them in ways that we were not able to. Giving them hope and education and ways to move forward. And I find that to be an incredibly valuable resource, to be able to share that with children and adults as we're trying to move forward and create a community of successful citizens. So I think, I think that that's all I, I have officially right now, if you guys have any questions.
Sure, Hendricks, I just have one, it's, so in reading your bio, currently I provide prevention presentations, I'm assuming that's suicide from what you just said?
Yes, so I, I provide the suicide prevention trainings. I'm also, I'm also certified in our Too Good for Drugs program that is presented in all of the elementary schools in Lyon County as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, you can step down, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Kay Edwards, please.
Hey Edwards had some medical appointments today, so I'm not sure if she was able to zoom in.
Okay, I don't see her online, thank you. Okay, Vita Keller?
Okay, everybody here pretty much already knows me, so I, I put in my application back when I didn't realize a lot of applications had went in. And, and my main reason for doing that is there's been a lot of controversy with the library lately. And so I just wanted to bring a little bit of my expertise of working on many boards. I don't have to tell you guys how many boards I've been on, including the board that you sat on. So I was just looking to maybe bring some expertise on, you know, running the meeting and not letting personalities get involved. I think it was just stated that everybody should be heard, and I believe everybody should be. And we have laws that, you know, not only in our county, but in our state and at the federal level, that dictate some of the things that people want to do. They, you know, you, they want to make changes in the library board, and I get that and I understand their passion, but we have to follow the law getting there. So I was trying to bring a little bit of my expertise to the board and, and hopefully smooth up a few feathers that we've been dealing with in the last few months. With that being said, everybody knows that I set on the Library Foundation for Lyon County. We support five libraries. I've been the president for eight years now. And with that, I believe you did get a letter of recommendation from our previous director, Amy Geddis, that also sat on that foundation with me when she was here. She is now resigned and we've got retired from here. But anyways, now we have wonderful Win Prindle taking her place. But Amy did want to send in a letter of recommendation because she's worked with me for many years with the foundation, with the libraries, how to shape that, how we got funding. You know, how do we make the budget work that the county is able to give? Everybody knows that the state level, that, you know, libraries are not considered to be essential, neither are senior centers. So we work with what, within the means that we have. And so that's really why I'm here. And since you already know me, do you have a question other than why I'm here?
It's good to see you, Chairman.
Hi, guys. All right, well, if there's no questions, Tammy, no questions?
Nope, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Deanne Davis.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Deanne Davis. I've only served as Library Trustee for the past 15 months, since I was just appointed to finish out a term that expired this year. During the short time, I have learned about the great programs and staff at each library and some of the needs that we have. If you choose to reappoint me, I will work hard to improve public relations and involvement, stretch our budget, increase donations, and improve the library website to better publicize all the wonderful programs and events the library offers. I understand there is a great need to add meeting rooms to the Silver Springs and the Fernley branches, and I would like to help see that happen someday, along with a mobile library that the citizens have been in questing. In addition to my career in education, I have done a lot of volunteer work in publicity, web design, fundraising, and organizing community events, such as the Family Safety and Resource Fair, which took place just a few weeks ago in Dayton. It would be my honor to serve a full term as trustee, so I can use these skills to help improve our libraries. Some people have commented that the role of trustees is simply to support the library staff. While I strive to have a friendly working relationship with everyone, I believe something else is expected of our trustees. Our duty as trustees is to exercise appropriate oversight and authority given to the trustees as appointees of this Board of Commissioners. And by NRS 379.025, where it says trustees shall, among other things, establish, supervise, and maintain a library, appoint, evaluate, and if necessary, dismiss a librarian, hold and possess the property and effects of the library and trust for the public, submit annual budgets to the county commissioners, establish bylaws and regulations for the management of the library, and trustees may do all acts necessary for the orderly and efficient management and control of the library. In other words, the main role of trustees is to provide oversight, supervise and manage the property and functioning of the library, and represent the interests of the public and the taxpayers to ensure the million dollar budget that you have authorized is spent wisely. If I'm appointed again as a trustee, I will encourage my fellow board members not to abdicate all the decisions, the library staff, or certain vocal fringe activists or private organizations like the ALA. Bit by bit, activists and bureaucrats at the state and national level are trying to take over control of our institutions. Half of the applicants you're hearing from today appear to be in favor of that. The other half, like me, are not. Governor Lombardo shares my position. He recently vetoed AB 416, which sought to prohibit public libraries from being able to limit access to certain materials. In his letter explaining his veto, he said decisions about what library materials are appropriate should be made locally. He went on to say local control is the best way to ensure that libraries reflect community values. The governor also vetoed AB 445, which sought to provide library staff immunity for criminal or civil liability.
Your three minutes are up.
Okay, as you can see, the passionate debate is not unique to Lyon County, it's happening all across the state. Thank you for your consideration, and may God bless each of you and grant you wisdom in your decision today. And I'll be happy to take.
Does anyone have any questions for Deanne Davis?
Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Eric Nelson.
Yeah, Eric Nelson, thank you for giving me a chance to talk to you. Been in Lyon County for four years, Washoe before that. I've traveled around the United States a little bit. We have a wonderful country. I have a lifelong love affair with books. My mom taught me to read from books in the library. Started to read newspapers in the library when I was five years old, and I really haven't stopped going to the library since. If you know my, if you looked at my application, you know I have way too many college degrees. It was librarians and archivists who get a lot of credit for helping me find the materials that I needed to write theses and dissertations and so forth. And as a matter of fact, I've been in all five of our libraries, I've checked out books from all five of our libraries. Yesterday, I was at the State Library, reviewed over 40 books and brought three of them home. So I have a love affair. It's not just loving books, though, it's understanding indexing and special collections, understanding funding and grants. Probably could be said I'm a grant expert since I've overseen million dollar grants from beginning to end. That's something I can help the library board with. Now, there's four things that I think are really important to do. Number one, Silver Stage/Silver Springs is the only one of the five libraries that doesn't have a paved lot and doesn't have a community room. Okay, well, how are we going to pay for that? The county had a $4 million shortfall last year. Couple ideas, first of all, from reconstructing finances, from looking at a year, the minutes from the library board, it looks like we spend at least $130,000 a year on purchasing books. Wow, we could save potentially $30,000 to $50,000 a year if we were buying those same books three months later at less than half price at websites like Algris. You might say, buying used books? Well, yesterday, when I was at the State Library, I had an impromptu conversation with three librarians and an archivist. And I asked them, do you ever buy used books? And they said yes, under certain circumstances. Also, we've got both Microsoft and Track putting in some huge facilities about two miles away. Both of them are known, particularly in Microsoft, for making community donations. What if we have a Microsoft community room at the Silver Springs Library and maybe that even paved the driveway? These are the kind of things we might want to look at. Second thing is, I think diversity is really important on the board. First of all, looks like we buy about 70% of our books just from three publishers. I'd like to see that expanded. Let's look at more publishers. Also, another thing is, we need a man's voice on the, the board. It's only fair, half the people in the community are men. And one of the things that I'm going to be interested is what can we do to get young men, young teenage men into the library? What kind of stuff do they want to read? Have we done a survey to find out? In fact, the whole idea of a survey and tying that into the books that we bought, those are the things I'm interested in. Some transparency stuff, we need to turn on the camera, the meetings are, it's audio. And sometimes you wonder who's talking, you don't really know. So let's turn the camera on in the meetings, and that's just a form of transparency to the community. Also, the libraries and the, the by, library policies and bylaws, I think it'd be a good idea to have them online, especially when they're updated. And the last thing is, the big issues. On one side, it's called censorship and book burning. The other side says all books should be on the shelf and they should never be removed. Well, I'd like to take more of a middle ground and say, number one, we don't need to do what we did like two meetings ago where the public talked about books that they wanted banned or kept. Why? Well, because Nevada revised statute, section 20235 third defines the word obscenity. It's a three-part test. If a book meets that standard, then we put it on a shelf and the chief librarian.
Nelson, your time is up, sir.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Eric Nelson?
Questions? I do have a bunch of endorsements, they just couldn't make it here.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Sarah Jorgensen.
Yeah, one?
Nope.
Okay, she's not in the room?
Not in the room, not in the zone.
Okay. If, if the rest of the board is okay with that, I'd like to go ahead and hear all the public comment before we discuss it among ourselves, if that's all right with you guys.
That's fantastic by me.
Okay, so just to let everybody know, I know this is kind of a contentious issue. Going to limit everybody to three minutes. Could take a lot of time, so if you just agree with the person in front of you, I'd encourage you to just say that, you know, I agree with the person in front of me and try to keep it short. And please, when people are up speaking, don't, I don't, don't want to hear any talk in the audience, please. Thank you. We'll take public comment in the room first.
I'm from Dayton, and I highly recommend you all selecting Eric for this position, Dr. Nelson. Excuse me. He's very technically proficient, he's a good leader. I've done research at the Marine Corps, so I believe he would bring the traditions and the values that he learned in the Marine Corps, such as getting the job done and being innovative and being very open-minded to this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Patricia De La Cuesta, and I live in the city of Fernley. I'm here to endorse Vida Keller for appointment to the library board. Over the past few years, I have worked with Vida on different projects. She is a hard worker, listens well to other views, and makes good decisions. I support Vida Keller for appointment as a library board trustee.
Thank you.
My name is Harmon Ranzinger from Dayton, Nevada. I happen to agree with Ron Dayton, who was up before the beautiful lady that's up here just now. And but along with that, I happen to support Eric for the position, because one is I believe that things have changed over the number of years in relationship to schools and libraries and things like that, and what's allowed, what's not allowed. And I happen to be one of the type of from the old, old school, that I like things that the way, the way, the way they were, I liked clean stuff in, in the libraries and the schools, good literature, and I think that's what the kids need, or anybody who uses a library needs. And so that's why I'm showing my support behind Eric. Okay.
Who was the first?
Sure, who's the first person?
Ron, Ron Dayton. I support Ron Dayton.
Oh, okay, so you, okay, yeah, I got you.
I got it. Okay. I hope you caught that.
I got you.
Thank you.
Lori Duncan for the record. And I live in Dayton and I highly recommend Dr. Eric Nelson for the library board. He has decades of experience serving on boards. He is very stable and makes good decisions and has extensive knowledge of libraries. And will use that knowledge to benefit Lyon County residents. Please appoint Dr. Nelson to the library and also have another recommendation. I recommend you reappoint Deanne Davis as a library trustee. Her career as a public school teacher makes her highly qualified. She listens to the concerns of the community and has been working to find solutions. She has excellent character and integrity. She has a heart to serve the people of Lyon County. As the current chair of the trustees, she has been fair and balanced running an orderly meeting despite controversial issues that arose. Deanne is dedicated and hardworking. She will help make our libraries the best they can be. Please reappoint Deanne Davis.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Anita Dayton from Dayton, and I support Eric Nelson and ask you to appoint him as the library board trustee. He will put the needs of Lyon County residents first. He's stable and he makes good decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your commissioners, my name is Gary Duncan. I live in Dayton. I recommend you reappoint Deanne Davis as library trustee. She has excellent character and integrity, and she has a heart to serve the people of Lyon County. As a current chair of trustee, she has been fair, balanced, running on orderly meetings despite controversial issues that arose. Please reappoint Deanne Davis as library trustee. I'd also like to recommend my name as Gary. I recommend Eric Nelson for library board. He has decades of experience serving on many boards as member of a member or chair. Please appoint Eric to the library board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, County Board of Commissioners. My name is Mark Tilford. I reside in Fernley. I'm here to endorse Dr. Eric Nelson for the library board. Eric is fiscally conservative, emphasizing responsible library board budgeting. He always watches out on how and where public monies are being spent for the best benefit to the citizen taxpayer, as well as being socially conservative and advocates for the preservation of historical and cultural traditions of northern Nevada. Thank you for considering Eric for appointment to trustee on the library board and for also considering Mrs. Vida Keller for appointment to trustee on the library board. Thank you for listening and good day.
Thank you.
Russell Sane from Wellington. Thank you. I'm just here to ask that you support or appoint Sarah Ross in support of the vote of the trustees to appoint her to the board. I think a fresh perspective from that particular seat would be good and would like to direct you to remember when I approached you, I believe it was at the January meeting with the series of emails from the current chair that made everything become so divisive and you know, really created a lot of problems and was undermining to the rest of the board. I'd also like you to consider reappointing Kay Edwards to the board. Kay has done nothing wrong. She wants to continue serving. And frankly, this last few months she has served with grace, having come under personal attacks repeated times during public comment. So I would just recommend Sarah Ross and Kay Edwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm back.
Patricia De La Cuesta from the city of Fernley.
Excuse me, you can only speak one time. I'm sorry.
Oh. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Brock Lovett from Silver Springs. I'm here to put my endorsement behind Dr. Eric Nelson and Vida Keller. These two are a powerhouse. And bringing them together on the library board, I think would be phenomenal for the county. They'd be able to raise third-party funds, bringing in local businesses and everything else to help donate to our libraries, helping, you know, improve the Silver Springs Library. It's in desperate need. Not only a parking lot and a community room, but just overall a tree, anything to bring some life to it. So these two have served our community well, and I think they would bring vast experience in library board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name's Nora Stevens and I am a current library trustee. As a Lyon County library board trustee, I ask respectfully that you consider the recommendations of our board for the appointment of the new library trustees to the two open positions. It's wonderful that we have had many interested candidates applying for these open positions. It's also wonderful that the candidates are from locations that have open positions. While it's not required that you appoint candidates that are selected come from the area, it's recommended in our policies to try to have those candidates representing their communities that they will serve. Therefore, I'd like to make the following comments regarding our board's consideration of the candidates that you have listed. We followed our procedure of screening and interviewing the candidates at our last trustee meeting. And since we had current trustees as applicants, they recused themselves from voting in the appropriate community slot. Thus, for the date position, we have the recommendation of Sarah Ross. I need to state that I was not interested in considering the current chair, Deanne Davis, as a continuing her role as a trustee or chair due to the divisiveness she has caused in our community and our board. Her lack of openness and her conflict of interest and refusal to recuse herself from that conflict of interest was pointed out. Her continued violation of our ethical standards and encouraging community slander of other board members and most concerning create an extreme hostile work environment for our library staff. And I want to emphasize the extreme hostile work environment for our library staff. I respectfully request that you appoint Sarah Ross for open trustee position for the Dayton library position. Silver Springs. I respectfully request that you appoint Kay Edwards to a second term as a library trustee for Silver Springs. She was unable to be here to speak for herself, but she she is a person that has served well and she has quiet grace and quiet authority when she speaks. We had other strong candidates who had great ideas. These ideas all could be done without being a library trustee. Vida Keller serves as president of the Library Foundation, and that would be the source of many of the ideas that she and Eric have for improving the services and the areas of things that we have in our library. The foundation has the money to do those things and would help us get grants. Kay Edwards did not have to reapply. I believe she showed great courage and dedication to her community by requesting to be appointed again. Kay, along with other trustees, have been long slander from the community. Kay always shows a quiet.
Thank you.
She will serve the community well.
For the record, I'm Eric Obermeyer. I just simply want to simply echo what Nora has just said. I, I've known Sarah Ross for twenty-some years in Silver City. You couldn't make a better choice for library trustee. I've known her and her family and know who she is in her service. And with, with the case of, I, I would recommend too that you reappoint Kay for the same reasons that others have said she's, she has shown remarkable quiet strength and consistency under, under some, some not very pleasant circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Jan Schart. I'm a current library trustee. I just want to reiterate what was said by Nora. It's been a difficult seven months to be a library trustee. I never expected to be called pedophile, person that distributed porn, or a groomer. So having a change is really necessary for our board. I would respectfully request that you honor our recommendation for Sarah Ross and reappoint Kay Edwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners, present and virtual. My name's Steve Singer. I'm a Younton County president. I've been here about thirty-five years now. Like those before me, I support the recommendation of Sarah Ross to be appointed to the trustee seat in Dayton. And I support the, well, there was not a recommendation, but I support the candidacy of Kay Edwards for the seat in Silver Springs. And I would remind all of you that the decisions you have to make today will have an immediate impact on the library board and the county on Tuesday, when a decision will be made on the exclusion of a book from the library. There are a hundred thousand books in the Lyon County library system. And in the last year, a much, amid much noise and rancor, two books out of a hundred thousand have been located and recommended for removal. One of the books was not removed a few weeks ago by a vote of four to one, including the most recently added trustee who was voted on by Commissioner Hockaday. On Tuesday, another decision will be made on the second book out of a hundred thousand. The decisions you make today will have a strong impact on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Patty Palmer and I am a library trustee as well. And I would like to support Vida Keller and Eric Nelson for the library board. I feel that Vida's experience and Eric's qualifications and ideas would be a great addition to the library board. We need to bring common sense back to the library.
Thank you.
Any online?
Nobody else? And no, anybody else?
Andrew, any online? Sorry, I don't see anybody online.
Hey, any commissioner comments?
No.
Okay, I, I did attend the library board meeting. And it was really clear to me that the three far and away most qualified applicants were Deanne Davis, Vida Keller, and Eric Nelson. And I found it interesting that not one of them was recommended. And it, 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 I didn't think the thing went well at all. It seemed like, I know they aren't happy with their current chair and they just wanted to try and make sure that they, she doesn't get to repeat, so. But just, that's my two cents. Those are the three that I will support. Vida, Deanne, and Eric Davis.
Madam Chair, it does look like there is somebody online. It's a phone number.
Uh, okay. You wanna unmute them?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Evangeline Elston and I'm from Silver City. I'm a native of Lyon County and I've known Sarah Ross for twenty years. I'd like to endorse her for a seat on the library board. I don't think there's anyone who cares more about the wholesome, supportive, and educational development of our youth and our entire community, including adults. Very few people with more extensive knowledge of the community and the needs of people in terms of finding and getting the information that they need through the library system. And a person who is so supportive of library programming and having knowledge of that through years of raising kids. Her work in the community in Silver City and in Dayton and all around the region is really unmatched in terms of community involvement and success in creating programs and helping people through the community. I think she would bring a wonderful Through the community. I think she would bring a wonderful um fresh breath of fresh air to the library board. And I hope you'll appoint her. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment. So back to the board. Does any, do any of the other commissioners have any comments?
No, no comment.
Yeah, Kirk Hendricks. Uh I would say I've known Vita Keller for years, um wealth and knowledge regarding procedures and. Uh we probably on nothing as your toes count committees. The end day was stepped up when it was needed, um had a chance to meet individually with Eric Nelson, very impressed, great ideas. But uh I'm I am very impressed with Sarah Ross's uh presentation and knowledge and and background. I'm up on the air on on uh the Silver Springs and and gladly listen to the other commissioner, but I I will be supporting Sarah Ross. Uh from the Dayton area.
So are we wanna move to a point? I'll move to a point. Well, Sergeant. Move to a point. Sarah Ross to the Lyon County Library Board of Trustees. The term expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty one.
I'll second that.
Oh, okay. We'll take the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, I'm a nay. Okay, so Sarah Ross is appointed three to one. And. I'll I'll move to appoint Eric Nelson.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Okay, that's.
I guess um and we could go back and forth, I guess, um but I I nominate Kay Edwards.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, I'm a nay. So we have appointed Sarah Ross and Kay Edwards. Okay, back to Chair Keller.
Who else? I'm just a number eighteen, eighteen A for possible action approved pursuant to NRS two seven one six three one two. A resolution twenty five oh nine, including the commercial. Property assessed clean energy program to provide the means of financing one or more energy efficiency. Improvement projects, renewable energy projects, water efficient improvement projects, or resiliency projects for qualifying commercial or industrial. Real property together with other matters. Properly relating there too for the program generally known as. A commercial property assessed clean energy pro- programmatic. Or. C-Pace program and to approve agreement with third party administrator. Sustainable Real Estate Solutions Incorporated SRS at no cost to Lyon County. And establish administrative fee of seven hundred and fifty dollars to be charged to cover the cost of. Our fellow county staff to review and process approved. Projects for participation in the program. C-Pace uh program background information. Is there provided.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Steve Rye, District Attorney. I know that's a long agenda item. Um I've been asked to present this today and and summarize it for the board and outline what the county staff is requesting. Um the C-Pace program, the materials are attached. It's basically a financing program. That's available across the country. Several cities and counties in Nevada have adopted this. It allows a program where developers can use funding for certain projects, rehabilitation projects. Such as equipment and installation costs for energy energy efficient projects. HVAC, efficient windows and doors, control systems, roofing, elevators. On-site renewable energy systems such as solar panels or geothermal, water conservation and its efficiency improvements. Enhanced protection of buildings with climate-related weather risks. It also allows the financing ground debt projects, a certain portion of that if they if the developer wants to apply for those. It usually represents a portion of the financing. Uh the way it would work in Lyon County is we would set up this program. You would authorize it the Board of County Commissioners. And you would authorize the DA's office and the program director, who in this case would be the Community Development Director Gavin Henderson. To approve the projects that are vetted first by a third-party administrator. Who accepts the applications and reviews those for compliance with Nevada and federal law. Uh the county would charge a fee for their uh review of those applications of seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh the third-party administrator fee is all paid through the closing costs and is part of the agreement and the application process. Uh the program, again, as I mentioned, it's available in in many parts of the state. It just depends on what the demand for the program is and whether people qualify for it. Uh today, staff is requesting that you approve the resolution authorizing the program in Lyon County. And allowing us to move forward with the third-party administrator agreement, which is also attached and ready for approval. Uh we do have the the insurance uh limits and everything have been agreed to. I want to say that Brian McCarter was on the Zoom all morning, but he had another appointment, I believe, and he had to leave. Uh right about when the item was called, so he he apologizes for not being available for questions. He's the third-party administrator for many many of the entities in Nevada and also across the country. And he's he would be the one that would handle these applications. On the county end, he would, there would be a link on the county website, materials available through the Community Development Department. And then it would take you to a website that uh this third-party administrator. Um manages and the people would apply through that process. So it is relatively seamless for county staff. There is some time involved when applications are submitted and ready for approval. Uh but other than that, there is very limited cost to implementing the program on on the county side. And very little staff involvement. How we just briefly how we got to this point today. A few months ago, uh Commissioner Chair County Manager Haskin brought this before the board. And staff was directed to look into it. We've spent a little bit of time meeting and discussing it, uh the comtroller, the county manager. Uh myself and we've reviewed the project, looked at what some of the other counties have done in cities in Nevada. And believe it would be a worthwhile option for developers in Lyon County. So that's the reason we bring it forward today. I can answer any questions. As far as the technical issues with the program, I may have to get back to you on some of those if you have specific questions. Uh County Manager Haskin and Josh Foley are also available to answer any questions.
Commissioner Jacobson, uh thank you, Chair. Um Mr. Ryan. Yeah, asking just, I want to thank you. I know that uh with a gentleman upset that we. I don't want to say kick the can down the road, but made sure that we were crossing our teeth so it didn't get dotted in the eyes. And so, uh it may have. Raised the ire of of some people. I appreciate you having taken the time to look into this and bringing back this recommendation. Thank you.
Any other comment from the board? Questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion. I move to approve pursuant to NRS two seventy one dot six three one two. A resolution twenty five dash zero nine, creating a commercial property assessed clean energy program. Provide the means of financing one or more energy efficiency improvement projects, renewable energy projects, water efficiency improvement projects. Or resiliency projects for qualifying commercial or industrial real property. Together with other matters properly related thereto for the program generally known as a. Commercial property assessed clean energy program or C-Pace program. And to approve agreement with third-party administrator Sustainable Real Estate Solutions Incorporated. At no cost to Lyon County and establish an administrative fee of seven hundred and fifty dollars to be charged to cover the costs. For county staff to review and process approved projects for participation in the program.
Second. Do you want to read the resolution?
No, we're good.
That's your job. You signed up for it.
You can borrow my glasses.
No, he always stated resolution number twenty five oh nine and that will go with that one. Well, do we have any public comment?
I already did that.
Okay, we have motion in front of us. Uh. Motion by Commissioner Hockaday, second by Commissioner Jacobson. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Uh we do expect the program will be available fairly soon and in the next couple of months. Uh the county manager or community development director will give you an update.
Thank you. Okay, moving to. Nineteen, Comptroller, for possible action through the second amendment. To the Mansfield and Mail Law Firm, PLLC Public Defender Agreement, effective August first, twenty twenty five. For the Friendly Justice Court to increase the contract from six six hundred and forty thousand five hundred per year to eight hundred and one thousand. Per year and to change the required amount of attorneys and staff report. Mansfield Mail Law Firm, PLLC Friendly Justice Court, Public Defender Agreement, twenty twenty four. Twenty twenty seven, amendment number two. Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, for the record. So the Department of Energy Defense Services from the state of Nevada has been. Uh requesting that we continue to increase the number of attorneys for public defenders as they're. Working with a monitor under a settlement agreement with the Davis case at state level. And Mansfield Mail was able to find a fourth attorney. And this is the increase to pay for that fourth attorney. I've run this by the Department of Energy Defense Services and they are. Um good with the increase and it will be funded through the state uh as a reimbursement as we pay these.
Do we have any questions or comments? Any public comment? Bring back for the board for a motion.
Chair Keller, I'll make a motion to approve this second amendment to the Mansfield Mail Law Firm, PLLC Public Defender Unit. Effective August first, two thousand twenty five, for the Friendly Justice Court to increase contract from six hundred and forty thousand five hundred per year. To eight hundred and one thousand dollars per year and change the required amount of attorneys and support staff.
A second.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Hockaday. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. This is number twenty, County Manager, for possible action. Pro- proposing ordinance amending Lyon County Code Title One, Chapter Seven, Section Seven. Departmental supervision, amending the appointment process for appointed department heads.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. Um so this is an ordinance that makes a conforming change to the um. To the county code based on the policy change that we made a few meetings ago. Um remember, I had changed that process or requested that the board change that process to match what our current practices. Um but recognizing that if that change had got a gotten approved, that I needed to bring forward an ordinance to fix county code to make that match as well. So that's what this is. Takes a couple of words out and I'm. Happy to answer any questions.
Is it just E? Where the words were?
Yeah, it was just the one section. Um it was just the one section doing with appointment of appointed departments. And it changed that. Um I'm sorry. So how it currently reads is that the county manager will make that appointment. With the approval of the uh Board of County Commissioners and I'm paraphrasing obviously, because I don't have it in front of me. But um it takes that with the approval of the Board of County Commissioners. It's out uh. When we appoint a uh unappointed uh official. Uh that's typically not been our practice to bring that for approval before the board. Um it would make the whole offer process quite a bit more complicated and um. It's not really feasible to do.
Mr. Jacobson. So as as I understand this as well, case of an emergency or someone, we can continue on. Without skipping a beat um in a in a lot of our departments if something comes up. Rather than waiting for it to be agendized possibly a month or two. With nothing there. Is that is that fair assumption on my part?
Yeah, I would say so. I mean, again, currently we don't um.
Right.
Yeah, I I.
But I and that's what I was describing as worst case, but.
Yeah.
Practices, we're we're not doing the same.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, when I was hired, I the it didn't come before the board. I know I fired a few department heads at this point and I've not brought this forward. It was uh kind of through the review process of that policy, realized that that was the wording in there. I'm like, oh, wow, we need to kind of address that. So. Uh that's what this does.
Yeah, and technically, those are your employees anyhow. You're our employee. Right, so.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Seeing none, does someone want to propose this? Uh I'll propose an ordinance amending Lyon County Code Title One, Chapter Seven, Section Seven, Departmental Supervision. Amending the appointment process for appointed department heads. Thank you. Motion's been proposed, I mean, uh resolution. That brings us to. Agenda requests. Do we have any agenda requests? We'll start with Mr. Jacobson.
Uh thank you, Chair. Any uh more information, any updates on the rapid infiltration basin uh would be great.
Commissioner Hockaday. None. Commissioner Casanelli.
None at this time.
Commissioner Hendricks.
None.
Okay, when we want a commissioner comments, we'll go backwards. Commissioner Hendricks.
Not at this time.
Commissioner Casanelli.
Um yeah, thank you, Chair Keller. Just wanted to um mention, I keep forgetting to to let's say it. But um I did have an opportunity to take a look at the uh mural at Silver City Park and it did turn out really nice. Uh colors are really vibrant, looks good and the um road project up there. I just wanted to concur with the 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 cab report that uh uh I believe it was Q D construction. I'm not not sure, but they did a fantastic job. The roads up there look great and um. Uh really impressed with the 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 project.
Mr. Hockaday. Uh the NACO Conference, Nevada Association of Counties Conference, September twenty third through twenty fifth. The registration is open. I did register already and just wanted to. Say that rooms uh through that site for registration are actually a little cheaper than Trivago. By about ten dollars. Uh so. Might want to have the county get on before we lose those possibility of early bird type room. And registration, I think, is until the middle of August for early bird. And it so just uh just a reminder, things are opened up for that conference, so might want to get on it. Mr. Jacobson. Okay, we'll move on to public participation. No action we take until. I mean, I no part to start all over. Public participation, no action we take on any item and tell it's properly agendized. Do we have any public participation? None in the room, none online. Close session? It is.
I'm sorry, I guess we do have a. Okay, yes, close session.
Close session?
Yes, sir.
Too late. Okay, we're recessed to a closed session.